Good evening, this is the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. Tonight is Monday, January 29th. Tonight we're holding a special meeting to allow us some time to talk about the budget. We did have two public forums last Monday and Tuesday evenings in which we received input from the public on a number of different items important to them. Likewise, we have received a number of email communications from folks in Guilford sharing input, asking for clarification questions. We are expecting next Monday, February 5th, to be voting on a proposed budget to forward to the Board of Finance. So this is an opportunity tonight for the Board to discuss further some of the items in the budget, to ask questions if we have them. Because one of the foci of our discussions and the public comment has been athletics, we're gonna talk in some depth about athletics tonight and have a presentation that Dr. Freeman is gonna share. Mr. Jake Jarvis, our athletic director, is with us tonight, as is Ms. Julia Chaff, Principal of Guilford High School. So we're prepared to have just the opportunity to go through a fair amount of the budget tonight and help prepare us for the vote next Monday. I am going to, I think we're gonna start with the athletic presentation, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. We are happy to share this presentation with you. I do wanna note that this slide deck is a little out of the ordinary for the slide presentations that I usually share. There are a lot of tables and charts in this slide deck, and so rather than try to read this to you, we want to present the information and maybe point out some items of note on the tables, but not try to narrate this entire slide deck as we go through it. I know that as Board members, you received an electronic copy earlier today. You have a paper copy in front of you that should make it easier to follow along, and if it is not already available on our website, this presentation will be available on our website by tomorrow morning for the entire viewing public as well. This slide presentation has been put together in at least three different offices. Linda did a lot of work with her staff in her office. Jake spent time in his office with his staff, and I spent a little bit of time in my office working on it. Julia may have edited and made contributions as well. So there's a lot of information, and there'll be a number of us commenting on this as we move through these slides. It is an invitation to conversation and deliberation, so there's a slide at the end that asks for questions, but as always, please interrupt us and engage with us as we go through. Athletics, co-curriculars in general, are an important part of what we do here in Guilford High School and in the Guilford Public Schools. We see athletics not just as a place to dominate our neighbors and rivals, but also to give students an opportunity to learn about sportsmanship, to learn about teamwork, and develop character as they participate in sports. I have shared with the Board and the community more times than I can count that I am the father of four sons who were all three-season high school athletes. More than a couple of them went on to be college athletes, and sports is full of highs and lows. Teenagers have some of their very best days and some of their lowest lows on competitive fields and courts. It is an important part of what we do, and many of us remember our high school athletic experiences perhaps more vividly than we remember some classroom experiences. In Guilford High School, we have a full athletic offering. With the return of cheer this year, I believe we are over thirty athletic offerings in a school that I think is floating right around one thousand students, and they have dipped below one thousand students. This is...
A slight increase.
This is a significant offering. It is a significant palette of choices for a school of our size. It's an impressive palette of opportunities for a school of our size, and at times, that brings its own challenges. Sports are competing with each other to fill their rosters, and students can only participate in three seasons. So again, it's both a highlight and at times, a scheduling challenge for us. Jake, I don't know if you wanna touch on this one a little bit, but the participation rate is something to be proud of as well.
Yes, we have about six hundred kids that are individualized, a thousand kids, a little over a thousand kids that get involved in athletics here at the high school. You have people that play multiple seasons, so that's where you get the eight ninety-nine from. If you play football, then you run, and then you do track in the spring, you know, that's where we count you twice. But about six hundred individualized athletes that participate by themselves.
Jake, I also thought that it made sense for you to speak to the next couple of slides about both team and individual accomplishments. What our students produce through athletics is impressive.
Last year, we had seven state championships, two state runner-ups, one conference champion, two conference runner-ups, division champions, seven. So our overall varsity record, not counting the sub-varsities, was three hundred and thirty-four wins, two hundred and nineteen losses, eleven ties, which is a sixty percent winning total.
That's last year specifically? That's not historic, right?
No, that's not historic. It changes every year. It's variable, what we win and the accomplishments of our athletes, but they do a really good job. You can see on the next slide, the individual accomplishments. We're very proud, and they work really hard, and they represent the school and the community extremely well, and they're recognized around the state for all that they do, and that we're very proud of them. So, I mean, the slide can speak for itself of their individual accomplishments.
We also wanna take just a little bit of time to note that we do not have a high school athlete on our property who is playing on or competing on any varsity surface that is older than 2015. This is a commitment that this town has made, and the Board knows, but maybe the town, the viewing public doesn't recognize, that these investments stand separate to but parallel to our operating budgets. The investments that this community put into this new high school, anybody in town who remembers the building committee meetings and the time and the planning and the effort that went into the athletic facilities associated with this building. So when this building opened, we inherited or we took ownership of a new upper grass field, of a new turf field, a complete new gym, a full auxiliary gym, new baseball field, new softball field. We failed to mention the wrestling space on here, and in the years since the ribbon-cutting on this new building, the upper field was actually a year, a year or two behind the opening of the building here, but we renovated the turf stadium field, the track surrounding the turf stadium field, the lighting in the press box associated with that field, and then just this past summer, renovated the tennis courts as well. And you see here, the stadium turf field, this was before the track was completed, then the new stadium track, our main gymnasium, and a little breakout of the main gymnasium after the rebranding, the baseball diamond, the upper turf field, the tennis courts that were completed this past summer, and then the softball diamond as well. We're just enormously proud of the facilities that we have on-site and that we provide to our students, and it's worth noting that while those facilities target our varsity athletes during the school day and during our school seasons, they also provide opportunities for the community well beyond that. So particularly, those two turf fields and the way that they support youth lacrosse, youth soccer, youth football, and any other opportunity in town are important to note as well. Additionally, with the change of the high school mascot, we wanna point out that we replaced high school uniforms as we rebranded. We went through a two-to-three-year process of re-uniforming all of our high school athletes as well, and so you see here the dates associated with how we re-uniformed all of our students. But we're here tonight for a budget meeting, and so beyond just patting ourselves on the back for the program that we offer, we do wanna spend some time tonight making sure that we talk about how we fund these programs, and specifically dive into a lot of tables and charts about where those dollars go. It is important to note that the athletic programs in Guilford High School, Guilford Public Schools, draw financial support from three separate and distinct places. One, and most importantly, is from the Guilford Public Schools budget. And so for the most part, our athletic program is funded through our annual operating budget, and particularly, the operating budget, and we've been working over the last few years with teams like swim and hockey to be able to say that the Guilford Board of Ed operating budget pays for coaches' salaries, all supplies and equipment, all transportation costs, all officials' costs, and facilities' costs. We're working to move in that direction, and we've been doing so over the last several years. You don't see facilities listed here because we have not yet reached a point where we can say that our budget is paying for all facilities' costs. Right now, particularly for swimming and hockey, we still have parents through booster clubs offsetting those costs to a certain degree. We then draw money through student activity accounts. Student activity accounts are predominantly, they predominantly generate revenue through gate receipts. We sell, we sell annual passes, and we sell tickets at many of our home events, and that revenue is important to offsetting the cost that impacts the budget. And then finally, as I just mentioned, we receive money from booster organizations. Those are essentially independent organizations that have formed around individual sports. Those parents raise money in a variety of creative ways to differing degrees, and they contribute those dollars to us. In some places, those dollars have traditionally paid for facilities' costs. In other places, they have paid for coaching positions over and above what the Board budget has provided or does provide, and at times, they provide additional nice-to-haves, things like spirit wear, or banquets, or other benefits that are provided to the students that are nice to have but aren't necessarily required to be part of the sport. And so let's dig into some of those tables and charts and look at the expenditures. So in a number of these next slides, we could not fit it all together, so we have broken it out by season. But here, you see the expenditures for last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, and broken out by fall sport. You see what the operating budget has entered into this under coaches and assistant coaches, officials' costs, facility fees, transportation, equipment, and then to the far right, you can see the impact of the booster clubs. You see field hockey there, you see football there, you see the girls' swim team there, and then you see the total expenditure by sport. It is important to note here, and it's going to be important as we look at lots of these tables, comparing different sports is like comparing apples and carburetors. If we own a facility, it is completely different than if we have to rent a facility for the students to participate in a sport. We're gonna show you a little later on, a similar slide to this but broken out per student, per sport. It is important that we note that we're not comparing, and Jake and Julia and I are not sitting here tonight saying that we should label, level spending per athlete and that we should spend five hundred dollars per every athlete regardless of the sport. That's simply not how it works. We are looking to provide those thirty opportunities to our students, and some of them carry more costs than others because they're newer, because fewer students participate, because we need to rent a facility, because there are increased coaching costs. They're just very different, and it's important to make that note. And you see that on this slide, where one sport comes in at eleven thousand per season and another one comes in at forty-three thousand. When you move to the winter sports, you will see here under the booster column how hockey boosters have been providing significantly larger contribution. You'll also notice on this slide, two teams that are designated as co-op teams. Girls' hockey is a co-op, where we are the host community, and we invite other students from schools that don't have girls' hockey teams to participate with us. Jake, do you know off the top of your head what other towns participate in our hockey programs?
East Haven, Coggehog, and North Branford has in the past, but this year, they do not have a girl.
And then in boys' swimming, that is a situation where we do not host a team, but our, our boy swimmers have an opportunity to participate on a swim team that is currently hosted out of North Haven High School, and it's not just our two schools, there are some other...
East Haven, North Branford.
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 No, Branford is with hand.
And so in each of those situations, we participate in a collaborative or a co-op opportunity, one where we're the host school and we invite others to participate with, and one where we are participating in a school that hosts us. In the past, we have also had situations where we have teams of one, and the most recent example of that would be gymnastics. We do not have a gymnastics team, but we had a very talented student who wanted to participate. That student was allowed to participate with another neighboring school, practiced with the school, competed with the school, but competed under a Guilford banner while she trained with and traveled with another school. And then here are the spring sports. Again, you'll notice how programs like swim and hockey and golf have facility fees because we don't own a golf carts or a pool or an ice rink.
Can I...
Yep, absolutely, please.
...do a little bit in the weeds. The, on the winter sports page, hockey, boys, paid by the booster club, that was, that nineteen thousand plus is for boys' hockey, not split between boys and girls?
No, that's what the booster club paid. So the...
But is that for the both teams?
So the Board of Ed last year paid fifteen hundred for ice time.
Right.
I'm saying that the total cost of the ice time was thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So the booster club paid the nineteen thousand.
But it didn't just go to the boys?
For the boys only, not for the girls?
The boys only.
Well, because the girls are the...
With the girls for the co-op, we broke down per pupil costs and then sent out to the other schools.
Gotcha.
And they paid us, so we paid the fifteen thousand from the Board of Ed budget.
Right, and the other was paid by the rest.
And they collected money from them, so the booster club did not have to pay that.
Okay, thank you.
North Haven pays for the girls' team, and then at the end of the year, sort of invoices us for our per student cost associated with those fees. We do the same, sorry.
Makes sense.
For the boys' team.
Yes.
So that's why the girls' hockey looks so high. We're not showing that offset of the co-op participation in this chart.
You're gonna see it la, oh, sorry, that's, this is raw cost.
That's why I'm just asking, like, how much of that is covered by co-op participants?
I don't think that this chart shows the offset of what we bill the, the co-op participants.
Right, because otherwise, it looks like they're carrying a big...
Linda, is that accurate?
Cost.
Yes. Thank you for noticing that, yes.
And, I'm sorry. This also doesn't account for like what parents wind up having to pay, right? So where we've got paid by booster club, there's kind of an additional column that we don't see that would be like parents' fees, like we pay, I don't know, fifty bucks to play field hockey every year. That's not included in this.
So your fifty dollars you pay for field hockey has nothing to do with them actually playing field.
We don't level any fees.
So that's not included in the booster club, though, right? So like, is, is parents' kind of cost to play that we've heard people talk about?
No, there's no, there's no cost to play. This is, so if you pay fifty dollars to the booster club, it doesn't cost you to play field hockey. The only teams that have paid like to play are ice hockey, crew, those sports. But like a field hockey, so if you're charging fifty dollars, it's not to play.
But is that going in the booster club column, or is that in some other column that's not identified on this spreadsheet?
That's not under the Board of Ed.
Okay.
So, so the booster clubs take in money as independent organizations. Some of that, they funnel back to us in the form of coaches or, or a facilities fee. Some of it, the boosters hold on to, and then they expend on the athletes, but they expend it independently. Linda, I'm gonna be asking you to check everything I say here. So if the booster clubs take in money from parents, use it to purchase spirit wear and deliver that spirit wear to the students directly, it's not showing on this chart. Every month where you accept a donation from a booster club to pay for a coach or to buy equipment that becomes our belonging, then that should be showing on this chart here that you see in front of you.
So boys' ice hockey is for the ice time.
Am I okay on that?
And baseball on the next page is for an assistant coach. Boys' lacrosse is for two assistant coaches, so you have that six thousand. So all that money has been paid to us to cover coaches, but it's nothing to do with we provide the balls, we provide the uniforms, we provide the officials.
Of course, some of the programs, one of the biggest expenses is the banquet, and so money goes to the boosters. The boosters host and pay for the banquet, and that money never passes to the school.
So that money's not on here at all. So we might pay whatever we pay if we are participating in a booster club payment. So we're paying to the booster club, portions of that are allocated here, other portions are not on this at all. Got it?
Correct. And then Jake and Julia and John and I, that's fun, Jake, Julia, John and I, we met with representatives from the booster clubs, clubs a few weeks ago because there's a language problem that we're trying to get ahead of. And again, I say this all the time, athletics in Guilford evolved kind of naturally, kinda like a rainforest, and everybody evolved at different rates and talks about things differently. Some of the booster clubs, to your point, some of the booster clubs position themselves and, and ask for contributions in a way that makes it sound required, that it's dues or it's a fee, and it, and for some programs like hockey, the reality is, it has been a necessity. If, if the boosters didn't raise enough money to offset the ice time, we couldn't have had a team otherwise. But a lot of the boosters position that as a requirement. To be on the field hockey team, you have to pay fifty bucks. Technically and correctly, nobody has to pay to participate in any of our publicly offered programs. And a few years ago, we were sending out letters reminding parents of that. This year, rather than working around and outside the booster clubs, we chose to have this meeting, and we're trying to clean up the language from the get-go, so that boosters can raise money and can do it through donations, contributions, fundraising activities, but all those activities are voluntary, and we, we didn't wanna demand and ask the clubs to do that until we were able to say, we're paying for most of the necessities, the necessities, now we need you to fall in line with the language structure.
Okay.
And ask people for contributions, not levy fees of the people who want to play the sports.
I hear you, I appreciate that information, but it's definitely not reflecting the true cost of what the sport costs. So hockey would not be able to exist because Guilford provides it because we don't. So they wouldn't be able to play hockey. You certainly wouldn't be able to grow crew, and so the explanation they just gave is misleading possibly, not, not deliberately, but the true cost of actually having to play these sports and participate in these sports is a whole different value than, or cost than what we're reporting here for many of the sports.
We're getting closer, so crew is always going to be an exception, and, and crew is structured differently. Crew is both a club at the town level and competes under our banner.
It's by necessity because we don't fund it.
Hockey and swimming and golf are getting much closer to being accurate, right? We're getting closer to being able to say, I think the numbers I heard is that hockey parents were paying twenty-two hundred dollars a year not long ago, and we should be down to about six hundred next year. That could be brought in through the fundraising. If this budget passes and includes this eighty thousand dollar increase roughly in athletics, of which, I think an additional ten thousand is pool time and seventy-five thousand, those aren't increases. If, if we make this investment in pool and ice time this year, as we said we were gonna do last year and then cut it in half, we're getting there. We're getting closer to being able to say that we fund the things that this lists. That's never gonna be a true cost for hockey because hockey families buy all of their own gear and equipment, and that doesn't happen in all sports. That, again, and I don't totally understand it, but traditionally, schools provided the equipment for football and basketball and baseball. Other sports like hockey and lacrosse, players bought their own equipment. I think part of that is because the equipment is so individual, and many of our students don't just play for our team, they also play for travel teams. If it was our equipment, we wouldn't be able to lend it out, they wouldn't be able to use it off-season, but we'll never be able to say that hockey is not an expensive sport for a family to get into, even if we say we're covering all of the coaching, all of the officials, all the facilities, all the transportation. Equipment doesn't mean individual equipment. Students are still buying their own pads, their own sticks, their own helmets, that sort of thing. I, I think we're getting closer now to being able to say it is an honest accounting, although I don't expect the booster clubs to go out of business. I expect the booster clubs to continue raising money, and I, and I think to an email that you guys received the end of last week, I think there's probably always gonna be a different level of service expectation. We feel that we are staffing the lacrosse clubs at the appropriate coaching level to staff the lacrosse clubs. The boosters raise money and provide for two more coaching positions.
For the boys, one for the girls.
Our goal is not to do everything that we're currently doing in the operational budget, it's to do what we consider to be the responsible level of investment, and then we're, I mean, we're thrilled to have a community that volunteers and raises money and then allows us to do all the more. Remember, our four elementary school playgrounds have been paid for with funds raised and right from, through contributions and volunteerism, not through our budget.
Can I ask, oh, sorry.
Well, is there a way to get to that transparent, level of transparency where we could understand as a town just what is required to fully fund, right? We will consistently have these positions that are paid for by boosters, but it would be nice from a, from a budget standpoint to be able to know if we were to go all-in on this, not, not saying we would, but, but for full transparency, how do we get there? Because we often have the parents or the boosters coming to us and saying, we need additional funding for a coach, an assistant coach, whatever it might be. We'd like to be able to maybe see that whole picture to be able to understand what that is. I, I hear what you're saying about boosters needing to be relevant and needing to fundraise, but it would be nice to have an all-in number to see what it was.
I worry about that to some degree, and I'll invite Jake and Julia to chime in, because the boosters and the teams are so different and individual at this time, some booster clubs raise a significant amount of money around really elaborate banquets. Other teams may just have an ice cream truck on the last day of practice, and so to, to do that, we would either have to control the boosters and say, every club has a hooded sweatshirt and this kind of banquet, and, or, or beyond that, we'd at least have to start asking them for a full accounting of all of their, and, and right now, we don't. The boosters are so separate and apart from us, I mean, maybe not the best analogy, but kinda like a pack, right? We run the program, they run money separate and apart to an earlier point, some of which we don't track or follow, and so we would either have to require a level of accounting from them and then follow that level of accounting, or we would have to standardize the offering, and some of the booster clubs have been around for decades, others are relatively new, some are, and, and it's just dramatically different, and I'd invite both of you and Linda to tell me if I got that right or wrong.
I'm confused on the question, I'm sorry.
So how do we count every dollar that gets expended on our student athletes?
So if you take field hockey and you eliminate the booster club.
Yep.
We're still gonna have a field hockey team, we still have three teams. They'll have everything they need to play. They won't have a banquet, they won't have a pink shirt.
Right.
What about crew?
Crew's always an exception.
I'm using that point, I'm using...
Please, I asked a question, I'd like you to just answer the question and don't interrupt me, thank you. What about crew? Crew needs forty-something thousand dollars from the boosters. You can't just say, we'll eliminate the boosters. That's impossible. Hockey, we can't eliminate the boosters. It's a non-reality. So we have, we're asking for a full accounting of what it would cost to fully fund the sports. I'm sure that if we asked the boosters, please send us your, your, your costs, they would send it to us. We just need the information to make decisions, and we haven't for two years gotten the information, and we would like it, please. We wanna make a decision.
So I don't think Jake was suggesting that we eliminate the boosters, I think he was trying to illustrate, yeah, okay.
I also think though, that, I mean, my, I do think there's some nuance that we were able to pay attention to. As the parent of a fencing athlete here, the fencing team provides the equipment. Most of the students, including my own, bought their own for a couple of reasons, some of which a little bit you're affected.
Yeah.
Brendan competed at a number of state, regional, and national competitions, not only during the school year, but over the summer. We were lucky to be able to afford the equipment, so he was able to have the most recent equipment. That was not required for him to be on the fencing team. And so I think there are probably also examples like that.
Sure, there's no doubt.
That are really complicate this and, and, and don't make it as, as crystal clear.
And crew exists in two realities. Crew is both a club that exists at the town level which charges a fee to participate and is a quasi varsity sport. Hockey is a little bit different. It is only a varsity sport that had a booster club that from the beginning was told, if you don't raise enough money to pay for the ice, the team's gonna go away. So while it felt the same, and if you had both a rower and a hockey player, you were spending a lot of money, they were structured very differently.
But the structure, but the structure can't be used as a, an excuse for the fact that the school system is offering it as a sport to between fifty and seventy boys and girls at a, at a cost of four to seven hundred dollars a year per parent. Are we, there would really, are we using the notion that as a club sport, simply as a way of avoiding the full cost? And if, and if the parents couldn't pay for it any longer, would we drop the sport for, for fifty, sixty kids? Or would we say, in order, in order to compete in rowing, we gotta pick up the, the cost?
Here's how much the cost is.
And we hear, I hear it all the time from the rowing parents, so that's why I wanna know.
I don't think we're using it as an excuse, but I think it is a reality. Many public high school crew teams fall into the same structure. And it's a way for a public school to offer a really expensive sport.
Eight, eight out of ten schools we compete with are, fully pay all the costs for two seasons. The data are there, we've seen the data. So the fact is, we're, we're competing against other schools that are four or five times more funded and they're, and they're treated as a two, a two-season sport. So rather than a kid playing football and, and, and baseball, these kids are, are practicing. In, in large part because the nature of rowing is, there's relatively little water time in the spring. So the only way you can get enough ice time, melted ice time, is to do it over, over two terms. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna take that sport seriously in the future, then we have to understand that it's what, the second largest sport we have in terms of number of participants? Fifty to seventy kids?
You know, that sport ranges, you go from fifty-something to ninety-something, the ranges are all.
And, and we don't buy any of the equipment, one shell can go between twenty and sixty thousand. Parents are spending a fortune. Now, if we wanted to say, we can't afford rowing, we're just out of the business of that, then perhaps, or know in advance that for anybody who wants to row, there's a cost. And, well, I'm getting from parents is this confusion, how come we're not getting the support? And so I think we owe them some answers or some money, one of the two.
Well, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I'm looking at this and then there's a, not many sports that are not CIAC. Why aren't they CIAC? Like fencing just did a phenomenal job, I believe they were champs or something.
Almost every year for the past several decades.
So why aren't they CIAC and, and more funded? You know what I mean? Like, what's the qualification for that?
Well, the CIAC designation doesn't impact the funding.
That's a different, yeah.
Why are some sports not CIAC?
CIAC will only, if I get this correct, will only sponsor sport if, as a hundred and eighty-one high schools.
Yeah, I don't think fencing.
There has to be a certain amount of those schools that have.
It isn't popular.
There have to be a certain amount of those schools that have the sport and then they will make it ACIS.
But it in no way, it in no way impacts our funding decisions. So I, I think it's important to add another, another piece to the historical conversation. As booster and volunteer support for the clubs, the teams, has become sort of significant and confusing in Guilford. We have also periodically cycled back to conversations about, about pay-for-play. So there are other high schools where any athlete who wants to participate is charged a flat fee. And it would usually be two-hundred and fifty or three-hundred dollars per season, per sport, with a cap for individuals and a cap for families. We have talked as a school system and as a board about never wanting to move towards the pay-for-play. And it doesn't matter what sport you participate in, it doesn't matter if you run cross-country or if you play ice hockey or if you row. Every athlete plays that flat fee and then that flat fee comes in and offsets the town's expenses. We have always embraced the generosity of the community, but that happens in fits and starts and sporadically and different. And again, it, it, it goes to both the beauty and the challenge of the way that we do things in Guilford. We don't charge everybody to participate. And if you wanna try a sport this year, you can come out and try. But then those more challenging sports have built these traditions of parental contribution. And, and again, we've been working as a board to chip away at that and to bring that expense down. Tonight's conversation is an effort to bring some transparency to that conversation. But both of those are easier said than done. It is hard to, to explain this in a way that is clear and easy and mostly difficult to explain it in a way that is consistent because it has evolved. I mean, it's, it's grown up in fits and spurts and we've tried to hold on to the character that the teams came forward. And I think the best, most recent example of that are the swim teams. So a number of years ago, a number of parents approached the high school and Jake and myself and said, listen, we'd love to have a swim team and it won't cost you guys a dime. We don't want you to invest anything, we just want you to let us swim. And we'll raise the money and we wanna swim for our school. And we started it that way. And then we started investing money into the programs and then the girls' team became a fully standalone team. And, and I think lacrosse historically approached the school district that way. I have a sense that that's how crew came on board, it was far before my time. And so each of these programs has sort of grown up with, with the idea that we're just gonna do it from a volunteer perspective. And again, that's great on the one hand, it's really difficult and challenging on the other hand. And we watch each of those sports, some faster than others, graduate into being fully funded. Hockey's on a thirty-year growth plan to try to finally reach full funding. Swimming looks like they've achieved it in six or seven years. There, every one of them is different and to some degree, it's the size of the ask, I think. So back to answer your question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I do have a follow-up.
You can take field hockey booster club away, you can still have it.
Yeah.
You can't do that for hockey or crew. You have to have the funding for the booster club or you will not be able to have it.
And so that's what I'm getting at, right? Of, of a seventy-plus million dollar budget, there's forty-four thousand dollars by these line items that I can calculate here that are paid for by boosters. And what I'm trying to get at is, of that number, what's the nice-to-have and what's the need-to-have?
And that, and so.
Because it'll help us be able to draft future budgets.
Paid by, paid by the boosters? Well, that swi, that swimming was, was, um, rent, pool rental, which we now cover, that's, this is last year.
This is last year, right.
Uh, ice hockey, the boys' ice hockey must have because that was the extra cost for the ice time. Everything else is an extra coach that they want, so it's not, it's not.
Ultimately, what I'm getting at is, we have a seventy-plus million dollar budget and we're talking about forty-four thousand dollars.
Yep.
And, and, and that is the difference between having some coaches, having pool time, having need, need-to-haves as opposed to the events, the, you know, the, the after-season events and t-shirts and all that kinda stuff.
And I think there will always be some debate about what we identify as a necessary and what we identify as a nice-to-have. That line will move. I'm sorry, Julia?
Uh, no, I just wanted to also offer that if we funded, let's say we funded additional coaches for particular sports. My prediction would be then that other sports representatives would come forward and say, well, you're funding four coaches for this team, we also need four coaches. Or, right? And so I think that is part of what I hear, the struggle in terms of the explanation is coming from this place of, we know we're offering a set number of coaches for each of the teams that we're offering as an opportunity for our athletes. It's a little bit of a tricky question to answer in terms of, well, if we start funding additional coaches for particular teams, then are we not opening ourselves up to, why aren't you co, why aren't you offering additional coaches for all of the teams? And then do you limit it by number of participants? That's what happened with our cheerleading team. We had a sharp decline very rapidly when I was here as an assistant principal in cheerleading participation and a big jump all of a sudden in dance team participation. And then it fell out of the budget as a result because we weren't going to be able to continue to fund a team of literally one cheerleader at one point. We had one cheerleader. And so, fast forward a number of years, we now have a new interest in cheerleading again, which I think is wonderful and I'm glad that we're working it back into the budget. But I think it's not that we're trying to be cagey in the answers. I think that like with course offerings, as interest wanes and waxes, that we have had to be adaptable in terms of how the funding has gone.
Yeah, it's like the, the swim team thing, like there's just more girls swimming in this cohort, right? That could shift eventually and maybe more boys would. But for now, the girls' team is what grew just based on interest of elementary, middle school kids being ready for it. But, so the crew thing, I just, you know, I, it's, it's a tough one because it's, it is an amazing, great sport. It's just very, very expensive. And so I get that there is like a, I see the side, the argument of equity on both sides of it. It's hard to know what that would even look like.
It's not, it's not a question of equity.
Well, no, Dick, I'm, I'm asking a question, how much would it be?
It's a question of necessity. We, we know how much it would be. The rowing team's total budget for the year for necessity, equipment, coaches, so on, is about forty, fifty thousand dollars, most of which comes from parents. Okay? And so whatever the historical reasons have been, at the moment, now that it's all transparent, that's far more than anybody else is paying. And so equity says, shouldn't we be paying for at least the necessities of that sport? And the necessities aren't being paid for.
So what is the?
And it doesn't show up here at all.
What's the fourteen thousand, what does that cover?
So the fourteen thousand you see up there for crew covers the cost of the coaches, limited transportation and, and a hundred and forty bucks in miscellaneous. And the, the club raises the balance of the money to offset the rest of the expenses.
So what happens to a kid whose parents can't afford that?
They don't row.
Do you guys say that to them or their scholarships?
No, 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 I think any of the, any of the.
Some of us pay more money so the other kids can row.
I was gonna say, my understanding.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And I don't, I don't, you'll tell us if this is a, a mandate or a strong suggestion, that our boosters who are in any of that situation, certainly was my experience, made it clear that if you were interested in the sport and could not participate, please confidentially go to, and they named a person.
Yes.
Now, some people are gonna be comfortable with that, some people are not. I'm not, I'm not, Dick, I'm not lost on that. But, but, but if we're gonna have a transparent conversation, let's talk about everything, that that is something that gets said out loud so that, so that there's an attempt to address that in, in the current environment.
So we finish the story, that gets said out loud, but what doesn't get said out loud is, some kids, knowing that, don't even dare to ask their parents to.
No, I understand that.
So that we know for sure, in many cases, kids aren't participating for that reason.
Absolutely.
And, and if we know that, that's a shame, that's all.
No, I understand.
That's one sport where the end-of-the-year celebration is at Jacob's Beach because it's free and the food's donated to the parents, bring it. It is, so it's not like they're going off and doing a huge banquet at Woodwinds.
I, 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 you can't on the routine as well for four years, so I, I understand.
So it is, and I can't remember again, because I split the cost, but I recall, I think it's around seven hundred and fifty dollars per parent, per child. So, or not per parent, but per child. So it's, it is a lot of money. It's not, it's not the frivolous stuff, right?
Right.
The banquet was at Woodwinds, you know, not the banquet.
I had a friend say to me, like, her son runs track, she buys sneakers, that's it, right? And then there's, there's other sports where they're buying, like a hockey, I mean, I have friends whose kids buy thousands of dollars in equipment. And it's just that piece that's never gonna be even, like, he buys running sneakers, this mom and dad buys two thousand dollars with the hockey equipment. So there is a, there is a threshold to even get into the sport that can really be prohibitive to some fans. But that's outside of our control.
But I was gonna say, pieces of that, pieces of that are, right.
Just the nature of the sport.
If I could, so I'm gonna suggest, if you don't mind, because these are important issues that, that we wanna raise and talk about but are not gonna get solved tonight, that, that we at least get through the rest of the presentation and we may be stopping with other questions as we, as we do that. Thank you.
The next series of slides, the next three slides give you some, just some historical look back. And so broken out by supplies, other expenses and coaching salaries along with the medical trainer cost shows you the increases over time. I actually think that page twenty-one of your budget book shows that better. So page twenty-one of your budget book shows that in nineteen twenty, the total athletic line was two-hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Proposed for next year, the total athletic line is five-hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And so again, while this is a small amount of the overall budget, we have been focused on this and, and the board knows. Every time we have an opportunity to hold a public hearing to talk about our budget, we hear from the athletic community. We know the impact that sports have on, on students and families and the community. And again, right, everybody remembers those components. So what you see here is just some of that historical expenditure. And you'll notice that there are years where the expenditure is over the budgeted number. There are years where we have expended a hundred and seventeen percent of the budget, a hundred and six percent of the budget. The years that we are over-expended are, that is where we go to student activity and gate receipts. Those, those funds help us to offset when we overspend. It is difficult to project exactly what you're going to spend on athletics because the seasons are variable. If teams go deep into the postseason.
Have seven championships.
That comes with additional expenses. If, if we buy championship jerseys, if, right, all of that has additional expense. And so we thought that the historical comparisons were important. And then we've sort of touched on this. But slide twenty-eight shows you both the overall budget historically and it shows you the percent of the overall budget. We're talking about less than one percent of the overall budget when we talk about these athletic expenses. It has an outsized impact on students, on families and on the community. I apologize, they're numbered on my computer. So I'm looking at the athletic expenditures.
This one?
Yep.
So, so we can celebrate the fact that we're having a comprehensive, really first-rate athletic program with great results at less than one percent of our entire budget, which means that, and we're offering sixty percent of our high school students a chance to participate in something that we all agree is not simply extracurricular, but actually really important and enriching to kids. And so it seems to me that as we talk about this going forward, adding some money to athletics over time in order to bring it to some reasonable level isn't talking about an order of magnitude of dollars. It's, the base that we've got here is really great and effective. And we're, we're so near yet so far for some prices, and so we're near there. I mean, we, we should be able to do this in a couple of years.
And, and we've heard, I mean, we have to be elected, we have heard from our voters. And, you know, times are different than they used to be. And we've heard very clearly from our voters, they want us to invest in athletics. So we really need the numbers of what it costs to fully fund the programs, not the banquets, just the actual sport itself, and what we need to do so we can look at it and say, this is something we can tackle in ten years, this is something we can not tackle, this is, you know, whatever it is. We really need to see those, the, the full cost of what it is for each sport and when we decide. And maybe crew, we don't buy the boats, hockey, we don't buy the pads, lacrosse, we don't buy the pad, you know, like that type of thing. There's, each, each sport has its nuance, like, like, at the worst.
So when you say fully funded, are you buying everyone sneakers, are you buying everyone sticks or?
No, 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 we would have to put a marker in the ground. And again, I think it would be going back to the idea of saying, coaches at what we consider an appropriate level, transportation at what we consider an appropriate, right? It would, it would be the items that we have identified on that slide and, and facilities, right? we have identified on that slide. And, and facilities, right, for, for golf, for swim, for hockey, we would have to identify those. I think the challenge for crew is going to be when we look at the equipment line. And so I do think that we've got a solid foundation. I think that the four of us could go back and dig into this more and try to create that. And again, we'd be putting a pin in the ground. I guarantee you that all of the booster organizations who are contributing in some degree to that wouldn't agree with where we plant the pin. We would probably come back and say that lacrosse coaching is going to be at the level that we current fund and doesn't include the two additional coaches that they have been providing for the past several years. But it would be a starting point.
It'd be a good starting point.
And then that pin would be negotiable every single year that we do a budget.
And we can, and if it comes down to that, we talk to the other schools and say, how many coaches do you have? And then we look around and say, okay, each, each team has six coaches. Okay, we have six coaches. Like, it, it, it's work.
It fluctuates based on sport and based on number.
And I'm sure the booster clubs will be more than happy to help figure out what we actually spent as a community each year on sports.
Do we have, like, like we do with class size, do we have sort of like number of coaches required per athlete?
Again, it's different per sport. And no, I don't think it's as, right, the, the, I don't think CIAC has those numbers.
No.
And we've never made a policy the way we did for classrooms.
Yeah, it would be interesting if, I mean, I wonder if we can think about that. Or even like transportation. Do we have, I would imagine transporting fifty kids with hockey equipment, fifty kids with football equipment is much different than fifty kids going to a cross-country race. Like, do we-
It's the same. It's the exact same.
Right. But like, you've got all that extra stuff. Like, is it-
Doesn't matter. It's the exact same.
That's my question. So that's my question, is do we need to have different parameters for transportation that make transporting students safer if it's?
That's not an issue.
I don't know.
The difference, the difference again comes for those sports where we lack facility, right? So the, the football team only travels to away games. All the practice and all the home game doesn't have that expense. The hockey team, the swim teams, the golf team, they have to travel for every practice and for every meet because we don't have a home facility for them to participate.
Right. But my question is about like per, number of, of butts in a seat. Like, do we have something that says if a bus carries sixty kids, that's, like, like what's the max? Like, do we have any kind of parameters around?
There isn't actually a bus company off the top of my head.
So, and it's based on the bus company?
It's roughly seventy-five for a bus. And it's different for elementary and high school kids, but I don't remember those numbers.
And so, so we, we maintain the same number of buses per student regardless of the sport and the equipment that, that they're also carrying?
The real complication there is, is relatively new, and it has to do with the driver shortage. And so the real, and we've put additional transportation money into this budget with the assumption that we're gonna have to be hiring more coach buses in the future simply because we can't get enough school bus drivers to be able, we've had teams stranded after an event until very late in the evening. We've had teams that, that generally get practice transportation, and we've had to take their bus away from them because another team needed to get to an away event, and that took precedence over a, a, a practice that was happening. Um, and so that's a complication. Jason?
I just wanna state the obvious, but something that hasn't been brought forward here though is budgeting for the unknown. And that, and that's every sport, kid, season can end at the end of the regular season.
Yeah.
Or it can go all the way to the regionals, which requires hotel.
Yeah.
Transportation, so forth. So, you know, it's, it's, to get an exact number, you might have to center or focus on the regular season in terms of budgeting. But please understand that, you know, in any given year, you might have unexpected costs officiating-
We will pay for all the state championship costs. Don't worry.
But, 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 but I mean, I think the point is that, that, I'm sorry, you're not finished. Go ahead. It does create a, a challenge. What I'm hearing a little bit is also it creates a challenge of, of comparison between sports, right? If, if a team goes to the, the states and another team unfortunately that year doesn't, you're spending more on the team that goes to the states. But that's not because you care about them more, it's because they have costs that are beyond-
And we're gonna look at that in a minute.
Beyond the season, um, as well.
That also, we're gonna look at that comparison in a minute, and that has a lot to do with the real variability about how many sign up for the sport that year, right? And so especially when you've got boys and teams, boys and girls teams, that the basic expenditures are the same, but then one enrolls a lot higher than the other, then you end up with a disparity in how much you're spending per student, but only because of the interest. And again, that goes back to one of the very earliest slides, when you've got thirty different offerings, then that, that variability starts to get teased out as well. Now, I, we've gone back and forth about whether we should even be talking about the comparison per student because we're talking about investing and providing the opportunity. And remember, these are apples and carbureators.
True.
Some sports just cost more than other sports to be able to provide.
So, Petter, to answer your question, and things vary, there's a lot of variables, the numbers are here. To have a sport, boys' basketball, these numbers will change a little bit if they need some more, if they need some more. But I'm just giving-
Right. So that's, that's the easy one, right? The difficult one is hockey, swimming.
Yes. Those are difficult because, like you said, it's the outside cost.
It's not, it's not all the sports.
But the other sports, it's, it's here. About ninety percent. I mean-
Most of them we have.
Some might need, some might need different things, a uniform, three, four thousand dollars, new uniforms in a year. You know, that might increase their cost. Some might, some coaches have everything, they just need six basketball. I'm just, so things kinda flex. But those other sports you talked about, the crew and the hockey, and hockey is always a variable because of the ice time.
Yep.
And how far you go in our practices. But with the crew, the, the rowing, Inc. owns the boats. And as, as Mr. Hirsch said, they're twenty to sixty thousand dollars for a boat. So my supplies, all-
But think about how much the gym costs.
I'm not questioning. You're right.
It's easy to say that's an expensive sport, but we spend bonded money, millions of dollars.
I, I do-
So my supply budget is sixty thousand dollars. That's to have every, everyone have a ball to play a game.
Yeah.
So if I just pull one boat, I couldn't put any ball in the field.
And I think, I think the boats, like, like hockey equipment can be kept out of it. And you only need a new boat every, I don't know, ten years?
Depends on how good your confidence is.
First of all, we don't buy new boats. We buy used boats.
Yes, we buy used boats. Um, but you're right. Even when we do that, as we work to do that, there will have to be some decisions that get made. And again, traditionally, football buys a lot of equipment. I don't know why, but it always has, and it, and we do. And hockey doesn't. Uh, crew will have, right, we will be making some arbitrary decisions, and we will try to be really clear and report those out to you about how those decisions were made.
But the principle we're discussing here is we shouldn't be comparing one sport to another. Whatever it takes to do justice to a sport, whatever that means, we should be, we should accept that some sports cost more per student. That's just the nature of the game.
With some nuance.
Yeah. And so all I'm saying is, we don't have, we shouldn't worry about if we're spending more money on one sport than another. We should worry about whether we're spending enough for one sport versus enough. And that's what we're trying to get at, is are we doing justice to the athletes with the equipment and the coaches and, and the venue that is required? If we can't do that, then either we should end the sport or raise more revenue. So what's good, it's, it's no difference in saying, how many students should be in a kindergarten class before we get a new teacher? Okay? And, and what equipment is neat, what books are needed? These are, these are true extracurricular things. Kids are participating. In many cases, it's very important. It makes a lot of difference, particularly post-COVID, in, in the lives of kids. Luckily, our athletic program is, is doing well. I mean, our kids are benefiting from it.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, in fact, we, we, we don't, uh, get parents who are constantly being, uh, overtaxed.
I just, I, I just wanna voice, one voice of caution in that we're not good at saying no. And so historically, when a group of parents came forward and asked for a crew team, we found a way to do it. And then it was done for lacrosse, and most recently, it was done for swimming. And so we have found creative and unusual ways to allow those things to happen when those proposals have come forward. Um, and moving forward, we can anticipate that there will be proposals for an esports team, or a sailing team, or for other new programs. And we will constantly be balancing, how many students are enrolled in the school? How many different programs can you support? And how does, how does the non-athletic parent portion of the community who also votes for and contributes to our budget feel about? And again, I get it. I understand that it is less than one percent of the overall budget. But that's constantly part of, of that equation. And so we sunsetted a cheerleading team. We've now brought the cheerleading. At what point would we say we are eliminating a team? Because-
That's a legitimate question. When they have less than ten members.
Right. Well, it's one that I worry about because we're not good at that part.
I, I, I would like, I, I guess I, I feel like, um, because of the conversations that are happening, to, to just say out loud, perhaps as a member of the board for, for twelve years, where we are in, in this place is the result of, um, decisions made by the administration and by the Board of Ed. Um, we have had teams over, uh, the past twelve years, where people come to us and, and the Board of Ed, um, made decisions to or to not fund those things. So I, I just, I wanna make sure that we are in a context of shared decision-making here. Um, and, and it may be that, that members of the board presently weren't part of those decisions. Um, but these have been board decisions. The funding decisions on the athletic line have been board decisions as well as administrative decisions. Um, doesn't change how we wanna move forward. I would just like to say that context out loud.
There's only one number in here that I don't see, and what has, and that is what we've been doing on the gate and ticket sales.
So we're gonna, um-
Is that coming up?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm going to relatively quickly then say that your presentation shows you those comparables by students, and I won't necessarily linger on those, other than to say that some sports are approximately three hundred dollars per student, and some can go as high as three thousand dollars per student. And again, to Dr. Hirsch's point, they're just different. And if we wanna provide the opportunities, some are gonna cost more than others. And that is, in my mind, an equity decision. It's about providing the opportunity, not saying every athlete gets this much dollars allocated to them. Um, but then we do have an entire conversation about gate receipts that we do wanna point out. And so gate receipts, money that comes in, in the fall, you will see that football is the greatest fundraiser. Uh, Friday night home games, tickets are sold, community comes out, and we raised approximately fourteen thousand dollars last year, um, at, at our stadium field. The fall sports generated twenty-one thousand dollars of revenue.
Can I say something?
Of course.
We only charge, uh, so, yeah, an example being football, soccer games on a Friday, and we have to do it at three forty-five because the trainer has to go to the football game at seven o'clock. We don't charge on that three forty-five game. We only charge when the lights, when we're at night. So if they're, so the field hockey team is playing on Saturday at one o'clock, there's no gate charge. So only charge is when we turn on the lights on the turf field.
Thank you.
And in this service, we charge everyone who comes? Like, do a high school student's pay, or do they get?
We charge everyone. We are offering, we offer passes for students and adults. It's, uh, five dollars for adults, three dollars for students.
Okay.
You can buy a season pass that gets you into any sport, all three seasons.
Yeah, how much was that?
Season pass, again, I don't know off the top of my head. Uh, I think it was twenty-five, thirty for a student, and then fifty or fifty-six. I don't know off the top.
I know that there has been conversation about not charging students. Um, I will, I will add this piece because I know that Ms. Jaff would be upset with me if I didn't add this piece. Part of the concern on a Friday night at the, at the stadium field is also about, um, supervision. And, and right now, um, we have younger students, younger Guilford residents who come to the games. They don't come in the presence of an adult. They're dropped off at the game. They pay their three bucks, and they're not necessarily there to watch the game. And there's a lot of running around. There's a lot of students leaving the stadium field out in the parking lot or on the upper field. While I don't think that-
How much was it for students? Three dollars? Three dollars.
Well, I don't know that three dollars is a, a significant investment for family, but we do, you, there are increases in the budget this year for supervision at athletic events as well, because we do have concerns about supervision. And I do worry that if, if Friday nights, under the lights, at the stadium field were completely free, that we'd have to invest yet more in supervisory expenses. And so there's, there's a little bit of a balance about, about opening up the gates literally, um, and being able to supervise our students properly and make sure that those students are, are safe and making good decisions while they're with us at the games. That changes a little bit for indoor events, um, and that's about controlling the space. Uh, you will see that winter sports, uh, we don't raise nearly as much as we do for fall sports.
Can I just ask a question? Especially with the, the stuff under the lights and the outdoor stuff. Why can't we make a rule that if a child is, you know, they do it in movie theaters. If a child is under the age of thirteen, you have to have an adult on the premises. Why can't we make that a rule? I mean, I know it's hard to enforce. But then when somebody, a kid does something wrong, we have recourse. Um, I don't understand why we can't do that.
I mean, there is something to be, to piggyback on that. One of the things that was going through my head, especially because, you know, going to a Friday night football game, you see the upper field, and you see the amount of kids that are playing up at the, on the upper field. Can we do something like no readmittance? Like, once you're in, once you're in the stadium field, you don't come out?
We could do whatever we choose to do. I worry about that because then you've got a, a twelve-year-old who chose to leave, and now we as adults and as educators are saying, you can't come back in here. And I think we'd end up with worse decision-making than if they leave for a little bit and then, and then do come back to us. We can do any of those things.
I'm not saying we're gonna solve this now.
No, no. And again, right, I, I would leave that for other conversations. But I just, I wanted to name it because I know that the charging of gate receipts as a practice has been questioned. And I think the same logic could be made. It's only forty thousand dollars that you raise. Why not wipe it clean and we'll just cover it and have a wonderful community event? I think there's something to be said about purchasing a ticket to be there for the event. We have encouraged, especially at the middle school, that if you're sending your students, make sure there's an adult with them. But pairing them up and checking them and keeping them together, we don't have the level of, of supervision to enforce that. So we-
No, but it really comes into play that if something goes south and the parents aren't on the premises, then we have recourse. You can't come back to any more games for the rest of the season, or, or something along those lines. Well, you know, I, I, I personally would not leave either of my kids when they were thirteen, one of them is, at a facility alone. I, I just, you, you, too much. There's too much temptation, too much trouble. And it's mixing the thirteen-year-olds with adults, um, with older high school kids who, it, it's not a good mix. I mean, I, that's just my personal opinion about being a parent, but, um-
We could do anything that we want with those structures, but I think that's, that's probably beginning to be a bigger conversation.
I was just gonna say, let's stick with the budget.
I know I opened the door to this.
Budget, yeah, let's stick with the budget.
Last comment on it? I just suggest the next time you go to a Friday night football game, go down to the concession stand, which is still inside the premises, and just look at what the younger students are doing over there. Because that is, we need at least two adults just over there. And even then, at times, it's overwhelming. Because the kids are getting on the roof of the shed, they are wrestling, they are. And it's not just, it's not just horseplay. Like, they could get injured. And so, and in the meantime, we have a whole crew of high school kids on the other end of the field as well that we need to monitor at the same time. So it's not, and I'm not even talking about the kids who leave the stadium. I'm talking about the kids in the stadium.
So I know there was a question that we responded to today about some of the lines around site supervisors, right? So we are looking to increase both the rate of our teachers that we invite back on Friday nights so we get more takers. But I also think we've talked about needing to increase the numbers of folks who are present at those, at those sorts of events.
Can I, um, sorry, wrap this up pretty soon. Um, thank you so much, everyone. Question about gate receipts. Um, a while back in the conversation, Paul, you mentioned, um, you know, when a, a team goes far into the, the kind of after regular season play, that gate receipts are, are a source of that. Is that, are there, what is that pool used for besides that? Or is that mostly what that pool is used for?
Yep. So gate receipts last year across three seasons totaled thirty-eight thousand dollars, and the expenditures are here. Here are the types of things.
Sorry, Mr. Page.
It's okay. Now, I, we're, we're fully aware of the fact that we gave you thirty-nine non-numbered slides on this presentation tonight. It's a lot. So the expenditures went to things like this.
Yeah.
So sometimes they paid for dues. Sometimes they paid for, uh, uh, again, fair, golf fees to, to be on the, on the course, course fees. Um, who, you, you see the types of things that we expended those dollars on. Um, a plaque, because the baseball team, right?
Won the conference championship first, second time ever.
And so sometimes it is a celebratory shirt for the conference championship team. Sometimes it's the plaque to- Sometimes it's the plaque to put in the, it is any of, it could be any of those. And sometimes they're reoccurring fees. When we end up going over budget, this is the line that can bail us out. You'll also note that while we brought in thirty-eight thousand dollars last year, we expended forty-eight thousand dollars. So this fund can roll over. It is different than an operational fund, so when we bring those dollars in, we try to keep a balance, and when we have a short year, we will expend in this place. So again, the vast majority of the dollars we spend comes out of your approved operational budget. Five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that we're requesting this year. It is small in comparison to the rest of the budget, but it's half a million dollars that we request from the operational budget. An additional fifty thousand dollars that we raised from gate receipts, really small in comparison to the budget, but that used to be the number that we budgeted for teachers. That was, that was one FTE until very recently, when we upped it to sixty-five thousand dollars. And then, the enormously generous, complicated, multifaceted, and confusing conversation about what our boosters raise. We are, when you think about it, not completely separated from pay-for-play. There is a pay-for-play spirit that runs through the community. It hits some sports a lot more than it hits other sports, but we still rely on the generosity of our community to help fund these programs. So it's the operational budget, it is the gate receipts and the student activity account, and then it is the monies that we raise from those boosters that have historically funded our athletic program. I'm hearing that we want to not put the boosters out of business, but we at least want to be able to get an idea of what it would cost over time to make them unnecessary and completely ancillary to what we do. And, and while this budget, I firmly believe, like last year's budget, takes a big step in that direction, we will work on detailing that answer better for you so that you have a better understanding of what that includes.
It's a small question. The athletic, I've had this asked a couple times, the athletic trainer. And I asked it in our questions, because I've had a lot of families ask me this. How is their time allotted per sport? Because I'm imagining there's some, and you don't tell me today, but I just would like to understand, on any given day when they're here, if there are fifteen football players that need them, and two of this team, like, how does that, is that on a daily basis you guys kind of just, they decide that? Or is there like a thoughtful process to say, let's be equitable about this and make sure that the teams are all getting time with them?
There's not a thoughtful process about equity, but we built, we built this new school, we put the training room down the athletic hallway. We built the new school, we put the training room down the athletic hallway. And we did that so that when all the athletes walk down to the locker rooms at the end of the day, they pass the training room. So they can go in, their trainer's here about one-thirty, check the school nurse, works on some stuff about injuries. People walk down to practice, go in and out with them, and then they, he, sorry, he covers in, through their contract, all varsity games.
All home, home games, or away as well?
Uh, away football, um, hockey's all the way because that's East Haven, but, um, only home varsity.
For the most part, they have to be available.
So what you have is, in a school with East Haven, when we're hosting them, we have the trainer onsite, they'll take care of both teams, and we go to East Haven, their trainer's there to help.
So what happens to the sports that don't happen in the building?
So, swimming, hockey.
So if there's an injury, then we have the coaches report it to the trainer, or make sure they tell the trainer, and then after the trainer reach out to the kid and say, hey, when you go down the athletic hallway tomorrow, after school, stop by the office and see.
I, I had, uh, uh, my son, he spent time in the trainer's office.
This is a little trickier, yeah.
Oh, no, 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 you, but, but you...
Bus is leaving for practice, and they can't see the trainer.
Well, they, they have to time it, they, they have to, they have to organize.
And we currently, we currently contract for one trainer. Right now, we currently contract for one trainer. And when there are multiple events going on at home, the trainer has access to a golf cart and a radio to try to be everywhere.
Mostly in the spring, because everything's at three forty-five, four o'clock, so, there's a baseball game going on, or a track meet, or they're running around, the tennis.
Question about community fundraising, just to, you know, to your point, you brought up a lot of how our community, you know, just give back, gives back specifically to the boosters. In other communities, I know we don't do it here, and I know it's not big in Connecticut, but you also have maybe business dollars that are funded, sponsors.
Yeah.
Is that something that we've ever explored? Is it, I, I don't see it very often in outside districts, you know? Tell me what the downside to that is, because I know there is one, otherwise we'd be doing it.
So, it's not something that we have explored as a board here in Guilford. Prior to coming here, in another shoreline community, we did a lot of work looking at creating a policy that would open the doors but control the access to take sponsorships, advertising dollars. You don't see it in a lot of our neighboring communities, but some schools will sell space on the outfield fence for local vendors and, and...
Scoreboards.
Businesses to buy. Scoreboards, pretty much every year Coca-Cola offers to buy us a new scoreboard, it'll be bigger and better than the one we have, and forty percent of it will say Coca-Cola on it. So that has, that's an opportunity. Most of our locals don't do that. We could have that conversation at a policy committee level. We could talk about whether or not, so the business manager, the athletic director, who we were talking about earlier, and, and I, worked on a policy in another school district, copied other exemplars, brought it forward. The Board of Ed spoke about it, had public hearings, and voted it down, and chose not to. I think the downside is, right, the, the extreme that some board members voiced being concerned about was, do we sell space on our uniforms? Do we, right, do we?
Yeah, to one end, to one end, and then it also becomes a matter of you're, you're now allocating specific monies from, from corporate dollars, from sponsorship dollars, what happens if they go away? And how do you fill that back in?
Yes.
Lose a team because, because somebody drops out. It's like Esther money, yeah.
Well, is there, is there also the, the possibility of, of the business or company having employees or CEOs whose kids are on our teams and then an outsized source of influence, or perceived influence?
Influence would be my number one concern, yeah.
Those are all the downsides, right? Do we want to open up our student population to advertisers, right? Our kids are sort of bombarded by advertising, do we want to bring that into, right? And, and this policy had looked at, you know, outdoor venues, banners that could be hung during a game for a home basketball game, but then taken down so that they weren't up during PE classes, right? What does it mean if we offer space in our stadium field? And is it permanent? Is it there during PE classes when now kids are here, receiving their free and appropriate public education and exposed to advertising? Can you control it and only offer it at night? And a board member who just said honestly, I don't want naming rights for our high school field, that's not the way we're going to name things, and I don't want uniforms that start looking like NASCAR jumpers. And so, I think those are the concerns. We have never brought that forward to you as, at a policy level to discuss. We certainly could have that conversation as a community if we, if we chose to. The easier route, the route that more schools have gone, and there was a big movement in this direction since oh-eight, oh-nine, when budgets got really difficult, was pay-for-play. It was the idea that schools said, only sixty percent, right, only, sixty percent of our kids take advantage of this. If you want to do this, there's a flat fee per season. It's three hundred bucks per season, but it's a cap of five hundred dollars per student, it's a cap of a thousand dollars per family, and that was a way, it was easier, it didn't open up to those other influences, but we fastidiously avoided that in Guilford. We never wanted to go the pay-for-play route. And a lot of other local systems do, there, right? There's a simple, you pay this much in the beginning of the year, and it goes into something really similar to that activities account, but it's a much bigger and much more predictable number because of the fee structure. We've never moved that way because we didn't have to. The community was stepping up voluntarily, organically, messily, but they were stepping up and filling that gap, and we never wanted to move in that direction.
That was a really miscellaneous question.
This is totally off-topic, but the baseball plaque made me think of it. Does the school have anywhere where, like, school records are kept, like, in track and field? Where, where is that?
It's in the hallway, right?
In the athletic hallway, the track team has a board down there.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, and this is, again, kind of personal, but what about the swim team? Because we don't have...
Swim team has a, they just put a board in at the YMCA where they practice. The YMCA put a board in, but we did put a board.
But not, not here in the, the building or anything?
No.
Okay. Just, I was thinking about that, because they practice, but they play in Branford, so we have all the Branford records.
With the, with the new building, we didn't take, I don't think we had boards in the old building, to be honest with you, if I remember correctly. So there wasn't, like, basketball eating scorers or this and that. It was, it's more, the only thing that happens is, in the wrestling room, they have banners of who won state championships and...
Yeah, I'm trying to think back. I grew up in Shelton, and so there was like a whole wall with all records and trophies and plaques and things like that that would go through the years, not, that...
Yeah, we have, we have some stuff down the athletic hallway. We've put in a ball, ball conference team, but I've done, I sort of, I know the schools. When we came to this school, everyone that's made all conference, I take their picture and I put it up on the wall as you walk down the athletic hallway.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So you can see it down there on the wall.
It starts in the commons and then it wraps around the hall and goes all the way down that athletic hallway where you can see a history of trophies and plaques and awards and, and recognitions.
And our, and our idea when we built it is the kids have to go there to the locker room, so they pass...
It's all, yeah, the walk pass is great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for, for being here, for all of this information, for answering questions and for being part of the conversation. Clearly, there's more discussion we're interested in having at some point, but this is a lot of information, and, and I really appreciate it.
And we recognize that this is just about as decisive as the class size conversation, right? These are big, complicated, messy conversations with lots of good answers, and, and we have to choose which direction we want to go, and we will absolutely follow your direction and, and continue to provide you with the information you're looking for so that you can make those decisions. Again, I do want to note, the budget as it sits in front of you, right, and, and on page twenty-one of the budget book includes an increase to athletic spending this year of seventy-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. That includes a number of assistant coaches that were requested, head coach for cheer as that returns, as well as some miscellaneous increases to lines like transportation, the ice and the pool time, and the site supervisor line that we were just discussing a little bit.
Which now I think we'd increase by more than two thousand dollars.
More than, yes, so, so again, right, there's a significant, I, I want to be clear that as the community comes out and talks about the importance of the athletic program to them, we want to be responsive to those community members. We haven't, right, to the order of magnitude comment, we could increase this by another hundred thousand dollars easily. Would not necessarily have a significant impact on the overall budget when you look at that bottom line, but it is part of the overall package of compromises and priority decisions that you are being asked both before and after this budget goes to the Board of Finance.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you, Paul. We have an opportunity to continue discussing the budget. Mr. Jarvis, if you would like to exit?
Thank you, and, and while I know we may come back to athletics, I did want to offer Jake the opportunity to sneak out here and Julia as well.
No, absolutely. Absolutely, both of you. Thank you very, very much for, for spending so much time with us tonight. So, again, we have submitted two sets of questions to Mrs. Trudeau and Dr. Freedman over the last week and gotten responses. There's another few questions I submitted today, but tremendously and in very fast order, Mrs. Trudeau has gotten back to us.
Just to be clear, some of the ones from today are not complete. There were a few that we weren't able to complete.
Right.
We've teased those out, but we didn't want to sit on all of them because some were more, some were more quickly answered.
Absolutely appreciate it. Again, we're going to be coming back here next Monday to vote, to make a, a final vote. So, there's an opportunity here to spend a little more time tonight, ask further questions, talk about our thoughts about, about the budget, things we, we may want to consider in terms of reductions, things we may want to consider in terms of additions. Because those are the, the concrete discussions we need to have in a week. So, I want to open it up to my colleagues to see if there are areas either for, for more questions of the administration or, or discussion among ourselves, as we're each considering thoughts on these topics.
What's the, I'm just looking, what's the cap number for kids per class in grade four? What's the recommended one?
The recommended number is twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
That's the high number.
Yeah, and none of those are presented as hard caps. None of them are caps or triggers, they're recommendations, and we should track to them to the, to the extent possible, and I should report out to you when we go above or below the ranges, but they're not, they're not hard.
I hear, I hear, you may have a follow-up to that.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's, I was kind of looking at that, that, I was looking at the numbers at Leet between grades three and four, and I know that one of the proposed positions is a fourth grade teacher. However, if you combine those three classes into two, they are, they do come out to be twenty-four each.
That's right.
I know it's not what we like to do, but in terms of looking at things that need to go and class sizes, and I think there was a statement the other night that we generally don't go from three classes down to two.
I think it depends on, it depends on the numbers.
Right.
And then, you know, and there's a, and I don't know what this threshold is, right? So, we have a, a recommendation that's twenty-four.
Right.
So, are we comfortable with two classes of twenty-four, knowing someone might move in? Right, no, 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 it's just, I'm, 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 you know, out loud. Or, or do we approach any of these grade-level recommendations and say, sometime in the year someone might move in, so we start one below that, or, you know what I mean? But I hear what you're saying. I did, I actually did a fair amount of looking at this enrollment and, enrollment pages over the weekend, because one of the things I noted too is that there are, and, and I think this happens on, I know this happens on a regular basis, we have three, at least three, within an elementary school, a grade in which teachers are going to have to be moved, right? Four, four, uh, fourth, sorry, four kind of classes in a first grade are now going into a second grade, there are three second grade teachers. You can't combine them reasonably, so a teacher's going to be shifted somewhere, right? We know that happens. Dr. Freedman, I did have a, a question, or, or I, I would like you to explain about something that you and I briefly talked about today, because we did get at least one email from a community member concerned about thinking about taking the Leet kindergarten from three to two because of open choice coming there. And the conversation you and I had today is, we don't know where our open choice kids necessarily are going next year in terms of which school. Is that a fair?
Um...
Or do we know?
So, yeah, so, Aces requires us to let them know the specific schools where we believe...
Oh, even the specific schools by February?
Yes, and so, right, what's important about open choice is that we will be making our staffing decisions divorced from that consideration. We will decide what is right for the, the Guilford students who are currently enrolled, and then we will inform open choice of this, and so at this time, and, and that will, we're going to ramp up really quickly, right? At this time, we are only reporting to Aces spaces for next year's first grade. So, because of this most recent conversation, we have reported to them that we will have three seats available each in Jones and Lakes at this time, because Cox and Leet are at least for the moment open questions. If at Leet we do collapse three sections to two sections and bring it up to nineteen and twenty for a first grade cap of twenty-two, then we can't offer six seats at that location and not...
Right.
But at both Jones and Lakes, where there are seven total sections, all that will still be sitting at fifteens and sixteens next year, we could easily accommodate three students in each of those settings, and, and we will not be challenging the boards, but, but we will not use open choice to correct falling off the low level, nor would we allow it to push us above the upper level. It will always be based on space available.
Okay.
But, once we add a student to a school, open choice student to a school, we, we, that's their school, right? So they, they keep moving up, all the way up?
Correct.
And so then, for the next year... And so then for the next year, when we adjust, we do count that student?
Yes. That is absolutely right.
But it'll be calculated.
Good clarification.
That's a really important clarification. Once those students enroll, they become our student in every way. They are counted and measured. And yes, they are then enrolled in that local school, just as your students would be if you lived next door to that school. That's correct. We would then present the next year's open seats, counting those students in the same way that we count everybody else. Thank you. That's a really important clarification. Dr. Val Stracey, the, the thing that I was gonna note is, so if you, if you look to the average, right, the average class size K through four is 17.1. While we follow the guidelines, the average makes it clear that we tend to track closer to the low end than we do to the high end. And, and the board policy makes clear that at, at year one and at year three, we should be reconsidering those sections as the students move up and possibly collapsing classes as the range gets higher. The fact is, is that traditionally and particularly the last three or four years where we've been so concerned about student wellness and class size and, and management as we went into and then out of a pandemic, we've not been making those difficult decisions. This year, we're talking about it again, not because of the absolute enrollment, but because of the variation in that enrollment, because it is so skewed across the four schools compared to other years. And so if, if kindergartens were all enrolled at 15 and 16 moving forward, I don't think we'd be talking about the idea of collapsing it going into first grade because that's still right on the low edge. And we've been tracking closer to the low edge than we have to the high edge. I opened up this conversation because as we move from K to one, we're going to be significantly below the lower edge. And we need to be having that conversation about whether we should be eliminating a position there.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
You're exactly right. You could make that same discussion about, about a class of 48 in grade three and four because you could make two 24s. But two 24s is right on the hard edge. And, and that's, that I didn't bring up because we've got wiggle room K to one. We don't have wiggle room in that one. It was the lack of wiggle room that got us into this situation with K because we didn't have wiggle room. And, and for what it's worth, right, we track the summer enrollments. Murphy's Law always have the, has them moving into the.
The wrong school.
Right. Into the neighborhoods that are up against the higher line and never where we're hoping they move in because it's going to help us out with that lower edge.
Remind me, at, at Cox work, we're 2019 and 19 right now? Is that where we're at?
Yes, I believe that's accurate. Yes.
Uh, at Cox, 2018 and 19.
Uh, as of January 12th, I believe that there's a.
Oh, sorry.
I believe there's an update from, you've got one dated January 12th. I believe it is more like 2019 and 19 right now. Correct.
And the reason I, I brought that up is because, um, just because again, we heard from so many Cox parents about equity. Um, I'm just, I just want to remind you that, that in fact, we did collapse from three kindergarten classes to two first grade classes at Cox just a few years ago, right before the pandemic. It's the current sixth grade class collapsed from three in kindergarten to two in first grade. So we have done it.
We have done it.
And I think that that's part of what's playing into the Cox parents' claims of equity is like, you did it to us and you're, you're, you're hemming and hawing about, is how they view it. I'm not saying that's what we're doing, but, because we're discussing it. But I just wanted to point that out and remind the board that that is in fact what happened. And that's kind of where all the, the, the bad feelings, I think, are, are being enhanced.
We have done it. We've never done it as frequently as we have added and we haven't done it recently. And again, all of that can be seen in that average, right? We have, we don't do it, we don't do it strictly, right? We don't do it, I mean, if you, you look at the numbers, you're going to see third grade classes of 16s and 15s, right? Because we haven't, we don't make a habit out of doing it really strictly. Um, and again, particularly not recently in the last four or so years because of concerns over class size coming into and out of this pandemic.
I, I, I have, I, I'll just state, um, and, and I mean, it would be great to have really low class sizes across the board. I, I feel really, um, I feel like we, we have to really keep our taxpaying community in mind. Three first grade classes of 13 seems really low to me in, in a year when we're going to be requesting a, a budget increase somewhere between likely four and, and 5% increase for the third year in a row. Um, I am concerned about that. I am, I am concerned about, about maintaining something that low. And, and also then possibly trading off something else we could do, um, in, in terms of, of budget spending.
We would be filling those seats with open choices to plan.
Not at, not at, not at Leet. Nope.
No.
So not, not at this time. And the reason was we needed to give those locations to, um, to Aces. They begin the process in February. So we needed to tell them where they were available. With Leet being an open question and this conversation being debated, we needed to take that oppor- right, we needed to go with what we knew and not with what we were anticipating. And again, um, I think that's also the right decision because we shouldn't be counting choice students in getting us to the bottom line. We should be making that decision absolutely based on students enrolled today and not counting those prospective seats. We, we made clear to the community when you approved open choice that it would be done. Um, and it wouldn't be done in a way that it was used to, that it didn't impact or it wasn't used to rationalize budget decisions.
Right. We're not creating classrooms or spaces for the open choice students. It's just what happens to be open.
Yep.
Um, unrelated to class size?
Yes, yes. This is an opportunity.
You got the whole budget wide open.
We have things to talk about because the more we talk about tonight, the more prepared we are next Monday.
This might be more a question for Linda.
Oh, God.
It's, it's medical. Um, obviously we, um, you know, we're looking at, um, a decrease of $800,000. One of the things that I wanted to get them, some, you know, just to clarify this on is there's two lines in the medical insurance page that speaks to, um, uh, employee contributions as well as payments to employees who waive coverage. I guess my first part of the question is how much of that is contractual? Is it, is there, is there contractual wording if someone waives, there's a certain dollar amount that's being, okay. Got it.
And we did that a handful of years ago intentionally because it was a savings to us. That buyout, getting them off the rolls is a savings to us. And so we had a lot of employees who were in family situations where they were carrying two insurances because why not?
Because they were automatically enrolled at that point, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of contribution, how is that, how is that determined? Is that a percentage of, of salary? Is that?
So there's two pieces to it. One is the employee premium cost share, um, which is contractual. The rate is set in, as part of their contract, how much they pay towards their insurance. The other piece of it, which is a smaller piece now, um, is retirees that still stay on our medical after they retire and they pay us for their insurance.
Okay. Yeah.
So those rates are negotiated every time we negotiate a new contract with any of the bargaining units. And over the last four contract cycles now that I've been involved in negotiating, those shares have traveled up consistently. They always go up a few points in every contract negotiation.
And we're relatively level from last year, but we're adding FTE. So my assumption is that it's just because the overall premiums are less this year? Okay. Thank you.
There was another conversation that I had that is important to note. Um, you noted that insurance cost is down $800,000 this year. That is netted into the budget as it sits in front of you. So that 5.4% increase counts that, that reduced cost in, in, in medical savings. And when I presented from the podium back to you on the 11th, I noted that this budget includes two years of, of instructional investments that we avoided in the last two years because of the significant medical increases. Last year, medical was up $800,000 of increased cost. That was more than a percentage point on the budget just for medical. The year before that, it was up 1.5 million. That was almost two percentage points just to pay for the medical. So this year, having it drop has allowed us to look at investing in certified and non-certified positions that are providing direct student support that we've had to, um, defer over the last two years because of the medical expenses.
So we spent a lot of time in the last meeting talking about whether or not we shouldn't add a, a teacher to Cox. If we were to do that, which adds to the current budget, that either means we have to find it somewhere in the budget or increase the budget. So can we discuss further how we want to proceed? Because we're going to do it now, we're going to do it later. Um.
I, I'm not sure we've decided that we're going to take, add a teacher to Cox.
No, I said, I'm, I'm asking the question.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I misunderstood your, your question.
I mean, it seems to be left and it, it can't be left. It, it either has to be discussed today or the next time. So I'm just saying, it's an addition to the budget, which we're allowed to do, and/or it requires that we add it and take it away someplace else.
Well, are we required to identify where it needs to be taken away from? Or can we suggest additions and then let, you know, allow Paul and the administration to decide on their own or make suggestions to us where they would actually take the money from?
If we, we, if we agreed we're gonna add it, then we know what we're facing the next meeting in terms of, okay, what, how do we, if we aren't gonna add it, that's worth knowing too. That's all.
Well, and when I presented to you, uh, on the 11th, there was a slide that showed areas where I thought you might want to consider increases and where you might want to consider decreases. And this elementary teacher existed on both lists. There was an elementary position because we anticipated the interest, we'd already heard the interest about adding a first grade at, at Cox. And there was an elementary reduction because I was acutely aware of the, of the enrollment and kindergarten at Leet. Those two conversations could be done separately. You could do both. You could increase by one and decrease by one, which would be a wash. You could do neither. You could do one or the other. And, and there were a number of other items on that list, some that you might want to entertain more seriously than others. But there, and, and that wasn't the only one that appeared on both. Um, special education tuition is always a line where I show it on both. The Board of Finance, I think, traditionally asks us, do you really think you have enough in special ed? Because it is so volatile, do you think that you've covered it? On the other hand, when things get really tight, there is a contingency built into there. That is more than we would need next year if we simply take this year's existing cohort of students and move them forward into next year. So there's always this sort of opportunity to make reductions in those areas that assumes a bit of liability in the rest of the budget if we do that. There's some risk involved in making those decisions. This budget doesn't account for any retirement savings. I remain, again, more cautious than ever about taking a retirement savings in this current environment. We have found some replacement costs, uh, we're, we're finding some cost with replacement now rather than savings related to, uh, replacement. And Muri, you were trying to talk and I just kept going. I'm sorry.
It's a small thing, but I'm just thinking about like curriculum changes. And we're, we're planning for an Italian teacher in the high school. The mastery-based diploma where credit requirements are changing for our freshman class. They're going to be taking financial literacy. But what happens to the mastery class for sophomores, junior students? Does, because we specifically staffed that to like provide for. So are those mastery teachers now going to then teach a half a year of eventually financial literacy? And are they equipped for that? Or is that going to go to a math teacher? Or like, I'm just curious. And I know that's out, but we should be.
So when we broke the budget and checked with the state about that, they told us that it would be anybody who was grade band certified who could teach those courses, which meant that we planned for the current mastery-based diploma teachers to teach that half credit of financial literacy and maintain the staff the way it is.
Okay.
A week ago, two weeks ago, they came out with a new set of certification requirements and said that it needed to be, um, either a math teacher, a social studies teacher or, or a business teacher to teach those classes. So that was not included in the budget. So we are not looking at that change for next year because it isn't, the kids who are most impacted by that won't feel that change next year. So we will deal with that in next year's budget, keeping things the same for next academic year budgeting.
So we'd upperclassman requirement.
With the, with the teachers that exist now, potentially taking both halves of the, of that course.
Right. I'm just saying, the kids who are freshmen now won't even be introduced to these classes until they're juniors?
Correct. Right?
They can as sophomores begin to take them.
Okay.
We will have the staff that's certified to teach that as sophomores. If they're freshmen now, no?
So in, in.
They're freshmen now, they'll be sophomores next year.
Yeah. In the most absolute sense, the FTEs don't necessarily need to change because it's the same number of students, the same number of courses. That isn't always completely true in a school of our size because it comes down to individual positions and assignments. So, um, right now, we think it's going to be a minimal budgetary impact. We need to work out some of the details and that.
It just got me thinking this weekend. I was like, oh, wait a second.
Oh, yeah. Got all of us thinking or upset equally. I, I believe it stormed into my office.
Because we, yes, because things will trickle. When you see curricular changes at a state level, you don't always know exactly what, and I'm learning this, you don't always know exactly what the financial impact and when it will incur. And we've already created our budget, but this is, okay. So you feel comfortable that?
At least on paper, yes, that it would be meant. And again, when you're in a, when you're thinking at the state level or even in really big districts, it's easy to say, well, the FTEs are the same and so it's all going to work out. But when you begin to get to smaller settings, it's not always that easy because, right, if, and we're not at a time where we could say that we're going to take a bunch of full-time positions and reduce them to .8 and we're going to be just fine. A few years ago, we could make those kinds of changes. If we do that now, we're going to lose the teachers we have who are going to find a 1.0 somewhere else and we'll be hard pressed to find quality, quality candidates willing to take a .8 in this current economy, um, with the teacher shortage. And so we may have to finesse some of those decisions, but we're not worried about it impacting the budget as it sits in front of you today.
Thank you.
I want to circle back to, um, Dr. Hirsch and, uh, bring back up our, our kindergarten classes right now. Um, we've, we've had a discussion about whether or not, um, the solution to this is to reduce a teacher at Leet. I don't think that's the answer. I don't think that's how you create equity. Um, I think we need to look at, I think we need to look at Cox and determine whether or not, you know, specifically as we're at the top end, um, whether or not the decision is to add another, another teacher at Cox. I just, I just want to be, I just want to state my opinion right there. We, we do not create equity by taking away from, from Leet. I just, I feel confident about that. Whether or not we determine we need an additional teacher at Cox is, is, you know, is, is a conversation for us to have.
I just want to say I disagree.
Okay.
I think we should reduce because then that also, you don't have to hire a fourth grade teacher at Leet. You could still expand to three teachers in fourth grade if you reduce first grade to two sections.
You mean when they become fourth graders?
Right. So for next year, right, you're talking about first grade going from three to two and fourth going from two to three. So I, I think that is, it, it, it's, there's a lot of layers in there.
Sure.
So that's respectfully why I disagree with that.
It's also worth noting, if we don't make that reduction now as this cohort moves into grade one, when this cohort moves into grade three, if we haven't had significant influx, we're now going to have three sections of 13 or 14 moving into third grade where the, where the board recommended level range is from 18 to 24. You're now going to be possibly five students below the low end of, of those projected ranges. And so if not now, then it's probably something that would be, would, would need to be reconsidered if not in the second grade, then definitely in the third grade when they're moving into that bigger.
And I'd agree with having that conversation that. Um, I just, I, I just, I want to be clear, you know, it's.
We'll have more data.
I, 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 I respect that. For me, it's not just an equity issue. Um, 13 kids per class in, in a first grade is, is a really low number. And, and if we were, had unlimited resources, that would be terrific. We don't. And I am just really concerned about asking for, um, you know, that, that, that we're having to deal with increases required by, um, uh, our needs, by, um, inflation, by supply chain issues, by all those kinds of things. Um, and, and, and providing, you know, recommendations that we do in terms of class sizes and then maintaining, um, uh, first grade classes of, of 13. Um, I just, I, I think it's, I think it's not just an equity issue. I think it's, I think it's a, a financial, um, I think it's a kind of a responsible financial consideration.
I don't disagree with. My concern becomes we are now fielding two, two classes at that same level that we're hearing from Cox parents at, right? They would in turn be a, a. They would in turn be a class of 20 and 19.
And with, with an upper limit of 22.
Right.
So that's just my opinion.
Well, I hear you and I, and I agree that we need to be very respectful of the taxpayer dollars. But I'm generally open to increasing spending when it directly impacts the benefit of the kids. I think it's very difficult to take away once you've given it. And I think that, you know, the parents would be upset and rightfully so. And if we're going to, and I'm not saying we should hold this class size to this size indefinitely. We should certainly revisit it every year, just like we would normally. I think it'd be very difficult to take away what we've already given. It's, I think it's too late.
I have a question about that though. I mean, we, we have increasing class sizes as kids move up through the system from K to 12. So I guess I don't see it necessarily as taking away. I see it as adjusting to movement, adjusting to kind of student capabilities. And again, that is why we have increasing class sizes as, as kids age in our system.
Yep. And we made, we made, well, I didn't, but the board made those recommendations for a reason. I just think that given the detrimental effects that COVID has had on the kids, now is the time to be investing more time, lower class sizes, trying to catch up. I'm willing to put the, you know, our money where our mouth is and really invest in these kids to get them back up to speed rather than taking away cost. There's plenty of costs that can be removed in other places on the budget that doesn't directly impact the kids. So I'm not, I'm not advocating to increase the budget. I'm advocating to increase a teacher at Cox temporarily until the class sizes work themselves out later. We can find, and not, and I'm not saying I will find, I would like to ask Paul to find places to cut the budget somewhere else to make up the difference.
You know, I also, I live, I live in the Cox district. I drive, I drive the local roads. I see the for sale signs. I, you know, my concern is what happens to Cox when we really hit that upper limit? And now we've got, you know, we've got, you know, those, those classes that are all significantly higher than we want them to be. It's not to say that we're not going to have students move into, you know, other schools in town. But, you know, my concern is just it, it, it becomes, especially at that first grade level. I, you know, I, I, I'd love to have this conversation in a, in a year from now when we're talking about, you know, condensing it to a second grade class. But I just feel that, that first grade class deserves to have those, you know, that, those class sizes that we ultimately want.
Time's up.
Change, change session.
On this conversation, Moira and I, at our last meeting, we're kind of looking at a state document. Is there any consideration from the state level that we might start seeing mandates on class sizes?
No conversations that I've been aware of.
And you wouldn't dare.
No. And again, right? At a state level, your published high end is low compared to a lot of other communities in the state of Connecticut. So I know that we're talking about kindergartens and first grades at 19 and 20. That would be considered low. And, and I communicated with a parent today who, who came from a setting where her child was in a class of 25 at that age range. So, right, I, I just want to be clear that this whole conversation we're having is about small class sizes. And we're talking about really thoughtful variations within all of our classes that can be described as small, particularly when you look at the average. And I caution every time I say it out loud, but average class sizes of 17.1 with an elementary high of 22, those are really, really positive class sizes that any community would be, would be jealous of.
So we have two responses. We have one response which says the numbers are okay. In that, that is, it's not a budget question for those people. And in another case, it, people are concerned about increasing the budget. So on principle, we have to decide whether we think the numbers are adequate without adding somebody. That's the, I mean, we're being asked, and as the parents are asking us to, to deal with the class size issue. And now we gotta decide whether we want to go against the limits or we want to go the other way.
Well, and if it would be helpful, the next time the board meets, we can come in with some concrete, more concrete recommendations for reductions that we can suggest to the board. For instance, the board is already aware that we've, we've identified a reduction of $21,000 that we can take in pension. That's just a drop in the bucket. But we can come back with some recommendations about places that you can consider reductions. They will not all be that easy, I assure you. There's going to be other ones that involve more, more loss than, than taking something that easy. I think if the board has those recommendations from us, the administration, you might be in a better position to then talk about two elementary teaching positions or possibly remember there's a new drama teaching position at Adams. There may be some other suggestions that you can then talk about more concretely if you have some, some other reductions that you can think of as, as offsetting to, to the increases that, that at least some board members I hear wanting to consider.
But independent of the budget, we seem to have a disagreement about whether we should add, on principle, to keep the numbers down as per the request. And that's got nothing to do with the budget at the moment. Whether we can afford it or not comes, is the next question. If we wanted to add it, can we afford it? Seems to me we should be able to discuss and decide whether or not we want to add a position on the principle that we think we don't want to be up against that top end. If we decided now that, no, the numbers are fine, we can live with the top end because, because relative to other districts. Well, okay, that solves a $70,000 problem. The next time we talk. So I'm, we got, we got on the, we got on the table, people saying they want the position. I haven't, I would support that myself, but I don't know. So we may be split on that, which is fine. But we're in a conversation, we might as well sort of resolve it at the principal level this time so that we can talk budget next time. And if we find out that we want to reduce it tonight, I mean, increase it tonight and we can't find the money next time, we, we simply say, okay, that, we can't afford it.
I do have two questions. The first one's an easy one. What brought about the drama, the request for drama at Adams?
It is a proposal from Dr. Mullen to be able to provide specials at Adams that look more similar to the specials that are offered at the high school where students will have the ability to choose. She has started to be able to do more of that in music where students can now choose not just performing groups, but also some general music offerings. We expanded from one to two tech ed teachers previously. And with the expansion of drama, she will be able to provide the, to the seventh and the eighth graders the ability to look at a suite of choices and make some of those decisions. I can invite her to be at your next meeting to be able to describe. I know that she described that to you when we met with the administrative team. I'd be happy to invite her to come. I'm kind of, I kind of think she's watching at home right now. I can certainly invite her to be, to give you a better, more detailed explanation. But it would be an extension of the specials offerings so that they would now include a world language offering at Adams as well as a variety of musical offerings done with the current staffing, choices within tech ed and the ability to choose drama as something that they want to move into.
So it's a want, not a need?
Oh, absolutely. It is an, it's an extension of opportunities that we would be extending to the students. It is not a necessity. No. Absolutely not.
And I think you know where my second comment's going to go. Because we've had lots of discussions about this in operations, the safety monitors. You know, I, it's tough. I tried to go through the operations minutes over the last, since 21 and 22. I didn't see the discussions in the minutes. And I'll admit, I was very quickly scanning through them. And I remember that we'd had a discussion, I brought up some concerns. You were like, oh, well, we're not doing anything now. And, and then all of a sudden they appeared. And it was never brought to the board to hire them or bring them on. And I know it's not certified staff. It's a lot of money to ask. It's a quarter of a million dollars. And I, and I should have, and I apologize. It got really busy at work, so I did not get to submit any questions. But my biggest question is, I would love to see any statistics that you have for the three years prior to hiring them of the number of unauthorized people you had on school grounds. If you, if you have, I would assume you, or maybe the police department has them.
No, we don't.
There's got to be some sort of basis for that in my mind.
No, we don't. We, we wouldn't keep that kind of statistic. And that's not the only reason for them, that's not the only reason that we chose to put them in place.
Right. No, I know.
These positions grew out of conversations that were happening locally and at a statewide a few years ago about armed security in schools. A number of our neighboring communities have moved to armed security. There were several conversations in the recent past where we were talking with the police department about increasing the number of SROs, about the possibility of, of looking at armed security in our schools or talking about a, a, a hybrid compromise where the police department would be providing armed security that were not necessarily badged police officers. In the course of that conversation, which was inclusive of the police department and therefore the town, we recognized that the town had ARPA dollars and, and we, we thought that a, a better solution for Guilford would be to increase the number of safety positions without moving all the way to armed security positions. And so in, in conjunction with moving from one to three SRO positions rather than going all the way to seven, rather than looking at non-commissioned police and having them in the buildings, this was an opportunity to put these positions in place. They don't simply intercede with people who are walking into the buildings unannounced or people who have found a way to, to skip over the front desk. They're also checking the perimeter of the building. They're in the hallways during passing times. They are outside the building at drop off, at arrival, at recess. So they become essentially extra eyes and ears for the principals. They're communicating back to the principals. They're not part of the disciplinary process. They're not armed and they're not part of the police presence in the schools. But they are part of an overall layered safety. And so in the same way that we're adding more cameras, in the same way that we're looking at security technology both around communication and around prevention, it was a way to put a different non-certified position, non-armed position in the building that helps with safety overall. If there is any kind of situation happening at the school, whether it's illness or injury or somebody on property who doesn't belong there, the principal has an addition, an additional person that they can go to, particularly at the elementary levels where there's no redundancy in administration, right? At the elementary level, there's a principal, there's certified teachers, there's a head custodian during the school day. So this allowed for that additional set of eyes and set of ears. They've all at this point been trained by a local FBI agent with look force, things to look for in the community, things to identify. They've also been trained by our special education staff in, in de-escalation techniques.
I want to stop you right there because I saw that in our answers.
Yeah.
We had that specific conversation in operations. I brought that up. I said, how are they trained in? I was told, that's not their job. That's what the social workers are for. How did that shift occur that now they are getting trained in that? Like, I'm trying to figure out how this is all working, you know?
So when they are in the building or at recess, right? If, if two second graders begin fighting over a swing, for them to be able to de-escalate that in the moment, in real time, in the space where it's happening, would be great. If two, if two second graders have a continual problem with each other, then they're going to hand that off to an administrator or a social worker. But the idea is an additional adult who can help to resolve things at the lowest level immediately before it ever becomes a problem. Now, that same training for our certified staff begins with de-escalation and moves straight into physical assistance or restraint. They were intentionally removed from the room as soon as the training went beyond de-escalation. They are in no way trained or expected or will ever be involved in a restraint or a physical assist or the disciplinary process. That's not their job. But if they can be there in the moment to turn the heat down, then that would be great. We've had two of these positions at the high school, but we've never had them in other settings.
For how long? How, how long have we had? In, in, in theory, it's the same position, right? It's a, it's a safety monitor?
It was called hall monitor at that time. And Aikso, who left us last year, was here as long as I was. So she was here when I got here and she's been here that whole time. And, and she became this known presence in the building, moving around. You know, at the upper levels, at the high school. And it also is going to involve checking on, on lavatories as you, as you walk by, right? It's a, it is a way to prevent problems. They are not there to respond to problems. And particularly around those recess and lunchroom times, that's a place where a lot of students are together all at once. So we want somebody both making sure that there aren't any unauthorized people walking. I mean, at the high school, on all the properties, right? We don't necessarily have people entering the building who don't belong in the building, but we might have somebody walking their dog. We might have somebody who comes to use the tennis court. We have people on property all the time. And this becomes somebody other than the principal who can go out and say, I really need to let you know that in school's in session right now, you, you need to, you need to go walk the dog somewhere else.
I'm just going to say, and I've said this since the beginning, it's not something I support. I know it's going to be unpopular. I do, I do think they are very important at the high school and maybe even Adams. It's more of the, the high volume of turnover, right? Kids come in, going, they get to play, they get to leave early. And just that sheer volume, I totally agree that they should be at the high school, possibly Adams. But with all due respect, we've spent millions on our security systems. They have, and they have come a long way since my daughter started kindergarten. She's almost finishing high school. It doesn't even look the same. You got the double door entry. There's these great cameras. It's phenomenal. I just think, you know, in this day and age too, I think everybody's more hyper vigilant. I know I am. I saw somebody in my building today that didn't belong in a certain space. And I was, I was not hesitant to be like, you gotta go. Like, that's not where you belong. You need to move along. And I know that our teachers and all of our support staff and custodians, everything are all working together. And so I think it's less, I personally think it's less necessary at, at the elementary schools given that there's less fluidity within those schools. Have you considered doing something more part-time where it is only at the elementary schools during drop off and pickup? Which is when there's the fluidity, when things could be off kilter, maybe you don't see as much, but not all day, and do a reduction in, in their cost? Have you guys, is that been a consideration that you guys have thought of?
We haven't. My initial concern is we wouldn't be able to fill those positions. That if we asked, if we asked somebody to be in two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon, we would, I think we would just end up with vacancies. It does not have to be an all or nothing decision, right? There are, there are six of these positions that we're asking to add new to the budget. There are eight overall. There's certainly, right? It doesn't have to be all or nothing. It could be zero, it could be two, it could be six, it could be eight, right? There's, there's variability within there.
Yeah, I just, I have a lot of concerns about this and how this has come about and been brought into the school that it keeps changing and finding out about this after the fact. And I, I just have a lot of concerns. And I have, I've made this very clear to you, Dr. Freeman, since the beginning. And unfortunately, you know, I know it's in response to some very terrible incidents from around the country. Yeah, I think Uvalde was, was the latest one, which is what brought about the armed guards. But even in those settings, we have seen that security or safety monitors, armed or unarmed, actually don't help at all. So it just seems to me as if there's a lot of money that, that's going to, that's looking to be expended on this that we don't really have the data on, that isn't really supporting putting them in there. I think there's just too many questions. I, I don't, I'm just going to go on record. I, I personally cannot support six safety monitors within our district for that kind of money.
Further to that is the SRO. So the SRO funds are going up. I think you, is it going from two to three or one to three?
It's going from two to three in the budget that sits before you.
Okay, so correct to assume that each one of those SROs is. Okay, so, um, correct to assume that each one of those SROs is thirty K? Is that how it works out?
Forty, I believe our contribution is four.
We share the expense.
That, that, that fills a lot of the, okay. So, so, so we are at ninety for three. That's what the budget calls for.
Is ours thirty, is ours sharing thirty, Linda?
Budgeted, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I stand corrected, we budgeted thirty per each. We make a contribution to the salaries, the police department covers the bulk of the salary.
So, we, um, I, I knew we had two, where are we thinking of putting the third SRO?
So, the structure would be, and, and if we get to fully staffed at three SROs, one would be at the high school for the full day, one would be splitting one of our middle schools and two elementaries, and the other would be covering the other middle school and the other two elementaries. And then, the plan would be that those are not locked in permanent assignments, those assignments would rotate weekly or bi-weekly, so that all three officers got to know all three buildings, all three staffs, all three populations of students. But with three people on, instead of one person who is supposed to be patrolling seven buildings, you'd have one person at the, the high school, the largest building, and then two people who are each responsible for three buildings on that given day.
And, and prior to this, what we had was one person at the high school and one, one SRO who was at the other six.
So, we currently only have one SRO who spend, who on paper is patrolling all three buildings, but in reality ends up spending most of his time, or her time, here at the high school. We have budgeted up to two, but we have yet to fill that position, and when we move to three.
And we're adding a third.
And we'll be adding a third next year. Um, now, that'll be a budgeted position. The, the police department is currently working to hire and train officers, and so, the fill will have to catch up with the budget.
Do we, how do we feel on that confidence level?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say, across the state, police departments and fire departments are having.
As much trouble as teachers are.
My, my question, my question, 'cause, forgive me, I, I missed somehow in, in this all, the, the third SRO, so, um, the, the question of then having a safety, nine safety monitors and three SROs?
Correct.
I'm gonna say, sounds like a lot.
Eight safety monitors.
Eight and three.
Um, and, I, I would, um, I would like, I guess, to think about that a little bit. I mean, I, I, I was interested to learn, and, and having these answers to our questions are so helpful, and then you described the safety monitor. I, I think I assumed more of a, a, a safety monitor, um, for potential outside threats, um, using them within the building and monitoring kids on the playground, and, um, I, I mean, I guess I'm wondering how that balances with our recess days, and our lunch days, and, and the idea of having three SROs and nine safety monitors, eight safety monit, monitors, it just sounds like a lot.
So, again, it is a dual responsibility, they, yes, they're there and they're watching the kids, but they're also monitoring that space in the perimeter as well. And I know I've told the story of myself walking up to a recess and, and being approached by the safety monitor, they're really doing both. And so, again, the position was previously called hall monitor, as we increased the number, we also expanded the responsibilities. And so, they're not just a hall monitor, they are now a safety monitor, responsible for the safe behavior of the students, as well as the safety of the environment. And, again, it is very intentionally layered. All of this is the idea of multiple layers. So, there is a technology layer, that we continue to be growing and investing in. Then there is a professional police layer, then there is the, the safety monitor layer, as well as an administrative layer, as well as a teacher layer, as well as when we teach students to be upstanders, not bystanders, and the Sandy Hook Promise. All of those are intended to be multiple and multifaceted strands in a net. And, and yes, there are redundancies built into that, and, and you could certainly reduce those redundancies, by all means, and, and hopefully not, not weaken the system by, by reduce, it's this constant measuring.
Um, just on the safety monitors, so, God willing, nothing ever happens, but they are not equipped, they are not.
No.
Something happens, they're stepping aside, they're not.
They are not security personnel, no.
So, I guess that's, my question is, so, they identify a suspicious individual on the campus, they report that to the administrator, the administrator calls the police department. Is that the protocol?
Or they interact with the police?
Right, I'm, I'm, right, obviously they interact, but if they still identify a problem, then what is the, the step that then happens?
Oh, the, the, the same that exists now, it's just one more person who has a specific responsibility, so, yes. So, if they saw a stranger in the building, or if they saw something that they thought represented a threat to, to the school, they would inform the principal immediately. If the SRO was on-site, they could inform the SRO immediately. If the SRO was not on-site in that moment of time, because even at three, we won't have full-time coverage, then they, you would call the police department. So, all of those, if it was more immediately threatening, they might trigger a lockdown themselves, and they would make the decision to put the school in lockdown. Any adult can trigger a lockdown at any time in any of our schools.
Are those as far as included in that training?
Uh, yes, they have received the Alice training in the same way that the teachers receive the Alice training every year, that talks about when you, when you trigger a lockdown, yes.
You spoke a lot about kind of what the, the day in the life of a, a, a safety monitor looks like. What does it look like for an SRO? Specifically, these three, if we were able to fill these three positions, what does that look like for?
So, the first and most important difference is that the safety monitors work for the school system and report directly to the principal. The police officers in our schools work for the police department, report through the police chief, and are assigned to our schools, where they partner with our administrators. They also are not part of our disciplinary process, although, at times, they may help with an investigation if there is an assumption or a suspicion that the investigation involves the violation of a law. So, it could be for possession of contraband, it could be for threatening or violent behavior, then the SRO would engage in that activity. They are, like the safety monitors, with that big difference, both looking inward and outside at the same time. So, they're aware of the environment, and they are there to protect our students against threats or dangers. They don't police our students, but they do move around and interact with our students, and to the degree that they can be lighthearted and friendly and de-escalate tense situations by their presence, we encourage that. So, if things are getting loud at a lunch table, and it sounds like tempers are flaring, that SRO's gonna walk over to that lunch table in the same way that a, an assistant principal would, just to calm things down by the proximity of, of, of being there. They are protecting our students, not policing our students, but we want to be building that positive relationship and rapport that every community would hope officers have with, it is, it is.
It is a very important relationship, and I've seen it firsthand, just how good our SRO is, and it is, it is, there's, there's a, there's a value to that.
It is the model of community policing at its best.
Yeah.
But what is, so, so we know, we know the SRO here is a full, is, is, is a, that, that SRO is stationed to Guilford High School?
When we get up to three, it will be.
Okay.
At this moment, is, it is not expected to be, but by default and necessity, it oftentimes feels that the SRO is here full-time unless another principal has to call him away for something that is pressing.
And, and if we're able to fill these, if we're able to fill these positions, the way you're explaining it is that there would be a full-time SRO here at the high school?
Yep.
There would then be, uh, an SRO that would take Adams and two other elementary schools, and an SRO that would take Baldwin and two elementary schools.
Yep.
And you'd cycle them, so that they all.
Yes.
Learn to, the administrators, they know the administrators.
And the idea there would be that those, those, those other two, who are now in the cycle where they get to patrol, would be present at each of those buildings on a daily basis, right? So, you might start the morning at your middle school, you'd be there for arrival, you'd be super visible, once things are settled and students are into that first-period block, they're gonna run over and hit one of the elementary schools, and then they're gonna visit the next one. Even the regular town patrol officers have moved, over these last several years, into a, a park-walk-and-talk model, right? So, the patrol officers, ten years ago, may have driven by a school, just to see if everything looked quiet. They now park their car, usually in a really obvious place, they enter the building, they interact with the front office staff, with the principal, they walk the perimeter of the building to make sure the doors are closed, um, they talk to the kids while they see, and then they move on to their next assignment. So, to, to move up to three officers would not change that model, but we'd have more of that model. It is intentionally unpredictable, they're not on a schedule, so you don't know when the officer's gonna be at each of those schools. We don't think that there is currently a need in Guilford for seven full-time police officers. Quite honestly, a full-time badged officer at one of our elementary schools all day long would be bored. But it increases the visibility, it increases that, that community policing component. And then, again, really, the, the safety monitor is a redundancy in that, but it's a redundancy with somebody who is not armed, is not security, but is, is safety, and without apology, it is meant to be a redundancy. It may not be a redundancy that we believe we can afford, as the cost shifts from ARPA dollars to our budget. And that is fair and reasonable, and your decision.
And I just, I just wanna add too, like, the police officers have so much more training, especially in like CRT crisis response, mental health, um, and the SRO, and, I don't know if everybody knows, there's a juvenile review board in Guilford, um, they can make referrals to that, so if they catch, you know, if they see someone vaping, um, and they get in trouble in the high school, they could be referred to this other juvenile review board that could help intervene, um, I can't say enough great things, listen, I am against SROs as a general rule, based upon what I do for a living. I think that they do some horrible things to some of my clients, and that's mostly in the inner cities. But Officer Jangris is an amazing SRO, and I, I'm serious that I wish I could clone him, because he has a great rapport with our students, he doesn't overstep, he actually helps families in crisis and refers them, I, he, I can't say enough great things about him, and I hope that we are able to keep him, and he's able to train more of the officers that come through, because it, it's an amazing program, and worth all the money that we put into it.
It's a healthy connection with our students.
Which is the difference between these safety monitors.
Yeah, it's a, it's a healthy, it's a healthy relationship.
We do have data around the SROs. So, Officer Jangris is our third SRO, we've had an SRO in the system for about six years. The danger and the worries with SROs is that if you place an SRO in a school, you see disciplinary referrals go up, you see arrests go up, you see expulsions go up, and you particularly see all of those things increasing, and you see a discrepancy racially in, in, in where that's happening. The SRO data nationwide bears all of that out. The, in Guilford, since we have had an SRO in schools, we have not seen an increase in the expulsion, in the suspension rate, we have not seen an increase in the expulsion rate, and we essentially have not had an arrest on school property for as long as anybody can remember. So, locally, the things that you would be concerned about with an SRO model have not and are not occurring, and we will continue to watch those data to make sure that we are not having an unintended consequence, that by putting an officer in a school to protect us from outsiders, that we are somehow more rigorously or unfairly policing our own students, and, and, and that's not what we've done in Guilford, it's never been the model, we've always had an enormously positive relationship with the police department.
It goes to the model after they leave Guilford. Like, it's a relationship with a law enforcement officer that's positive, for whatever their experiences are beyond that, which, to your point, on a state level, it's a really difficult conversation in a lot of districts, but we're really fortunate, and so, we have an incredible model. So, I personally would wholeheartedly support the SRO line in this budget, because I think that is the model we have built in this community, that has proven, not only around safety, but just relationship with kids, that, that safe, smart person in the building that they can go to.
Correct, one of the best dollar values.
Right.
That we have in the whole budget.
Yes. So, I will go on record as saying, you know, like, I think that this is an investment we've made, and it's, it's proven itself, right? In terms of data, you're saying about data, it's proven itself effective, just anecdotally from the stories we hear from families, but, um, and, you know, as long as we can staff it, that's gonna be the thing, you know? It's, it's sad, but it's hard to staff police departments and fire departments right now, so.
It is worth noting that the SRO model is more expensive, it's just a shared expense with the police department, right? And so, there, there is a cost to this, it's just only part of it shows up in our budget, the other part shows in the police department budget, and we appreciate that partnership.
Right, it's in their budget too, so, yeah, yeah.
But that's what makes it even that much more valuable.
Right, because the community's investing on two fronts in this idea, yeah.
So, so we agree, the SROs are valuable, and we like them, because they're working out, right, so far.
Yeah.
So, but I, I still have an issue with the, what do we call them, hall monitors?
Safety monitors.
Safety monitors, so the safety monitors, um, and I, while I do appreciate it, it's part of the, the layering, um, I, I haven't seen any data that we needed them, I haven't heard of incidences where they've been requ, like, we, we've never said, "Oh, I really wish we had ten more, oh, I really wish we had more." This happened, and it could've been eliminated if we had one more security, or, sorry, safety monitor. I don't know where they come from, I don't know what company hires them, I don't know how they're trained, I don't know what their skillsets are, I don't know that they're trained in objectivity. I imagine, given the, the amount of security guards that I've hired in my lifetime, which are many, or, and managed, and have, have to terminate, they're very subjective, they're completely biased by their own life that they've lived. And again, they're not, they're not trained like police officers are trained, and I have a very difficult time seeing how they're anything more than a, "It's nice to have as long as we get a good one," or six, and given the cost. And now, I also, I don't think that the, the responsibility of deciding the safety of our children should be on the board. We didn't add them to the board, we didn't approve them in past budgets, and I, I don't appreciate that we are now having to decide as a board whether or not we should have safety monitors, uh, because hopefully nothing happens, but if something does happen, I certainly don't wanna be the guy who voted and recommended eliminating safety monitors. So, I will say that I don't appreciate the way that this came about, um, without consulting the board, without talking to us, using ARPA money, and then rolling it into the budget. It, it really, it really, you know, I know it wasn't on purpose, I know that, obviously. But at the same time, now the responsibility is on us to say, "There's three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of safety monitors that were never, we never saw the need, we weren't consulted on, and now, we're having to decide between whether or not we add a teacher at Cox."
Right.
And safety monitors, who, frankly, I don't, I don't care if someone's walking their dog on the property, I don't need to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year at the sacrifice of actual education, um, costs that we could be, we could be spending on kids' education. It's, honestly, I think it's a raw deal, and I'm disappointed that we have to deal with this right now.
Well, I, I appreciate that position, and I own that, that was my.
And again, I, I know you didn't do it on purpose.
That was my decision, and I did it based on conversations that were happening statewide about whether we are moving towards putting armed security guards in the building, so, I appreciate that, I own that, and I acknowledge that I have placed the board in that position as we now weigh whether we keep these positions moving forward or not.
But there's another side to that. Sit back, son. If, if these did not get put in around the concept of safety, when, when we were all worried about the national stuff, and, um, something happened, we would, we would beat the superintendent up for saying, "How come you didn't, how come you weren't thinking forward?" So, what Paul did was he thought forward, exactly what we want, and it is our responsibility, we don't have to like it, and we may decide that it's not a priority now, but I'd rather be able to say that now than not have that choice. I think the forward-looking notion of, let's always be even over-concerned about safety is better than being under-concerned. So, in that sense, I think it's, I think it was the right thing to do, it may not be the right thing to do in, in our funding of it, it was a luxury last year, 'cause we didn't have to pay for it, but the concept made sense, so, now, now we have to decide. But I'd rather, I'd rather decide nine of us than one person.
And Dick, if I could just, I respectfully disagree with that, only because we don't know the training, the experience, the things of that nature, which we do have with our police, with the SROs. And, and that's, I, I just wanna draw a big distinction between the two.
I'm not, I'm not arguing for one or the other, but my point was, I think it was a wise, I was disagreeing.
With us.
I was disagreeing with Noel.
Yeah.
Who essentially was making the case that it shouldn't be brought, this is not our problem, and I'm saying, "Well, Paul says he brought it up, that's what he's supposed to do, and, and he's supposed to put us in that position." And I'm happy to make the decision, we may decide not to do it for the reasons you're suggesting, but I think it was the right, the right thing to do, to, to raise the issue, and it's now raised. It wasn't a budget issue last year, and it was a joint decision between the town and the, and the. Um, and it was a joint decision between the town and, 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 and the administration. We had the luxury last year of making that decision. And the question is, is it a luxury, should, do we, is it, is it a luxury too much that this year we don't think we need it? That's all. And that's, that's, that's a fair decision.
Um, we've talked enrollment. We've talked athletics. We've talked safety monitors. Are there other topics that, um, we want to address or, or questions we want to ask before?
I think I have one that'll be a healthy conversation. Substitutes. There's a significant number of substitutes.
I, I actually had that on my list, not because I, I don't, we haven't heard so much about this strain. It's just a big amount. So trying to understand, well, no, I should, but you asked the question.
No.
Sorry.
It, it is a significant number, and is that, is, is all of that headcount? Like, I, I guess, you know, we're, we're throwing a lot of money at what seemingly is a big problem, right? We've consistently seen this more and more. Does this even solve the problem? Or is it, are we able to even fill these, these seats if, if money is not an object? Um, I'm just trying to figure out where this money is going to be allocated to and what purpose.
So there's a, a news story out this weekend about Greenwich having exactly the same conversation. Superintendent Greenwich was really articulate about the need for substitutes in Greenwich. You could have changed it to Guilford. So costs for substitutes are going up in all ways. We have been increasing the pay to substitutes to try to better fill the positions. At the same time, we have increasing need for substitutes. So with the teacher shortage, we're seeing new hires. We're hiring at a higher rate. We're sometimes hiring younger staff, and we are having a constant need for long-term substitutes. We're having a hard time filling long-term substitutes. Long-term subs used to come in at a scale. For the first 40 days, you were paid the regular daily rate. It wasn't until after 40 days that you were bumped up to a more professional rate. We're not getting people with that offer anymore. When we know that we've got a long-term position, we are forced to pay the professional rate from day one or we're not going to have people coming in filling those positions. We've increased the rate for building subs and we've held building subs to the pandemic level. We haven't retreated back to the pre-pandemic level. Underlaying all of that, we are seeing the absentee rate for teachers increasing. So teachers are taking more time out. They're taking time that they have contractually available to them. And the thing becomes a self-feeding system. Because we're having a hard time filling substitutes and covering classes, teachers are stepping up and covering for each other, which is wearing teachers down, and you're seeing teachers take more time out of the building themselves. With COVID still out there and the seasonal flu out there and RSV out there, we're just seeing. So we've got more days that we need to cover. We are competing for subs, so we're raising the, the rate to cover those people. This is simply a calculation of usage and the new rates and trying to be competitive in, in filling those positions. And no, we're not filling all those positions right now. Principals are hearing from teachers, and we're constantly hearing from principals, that we're not getting them all the subs they need, so we're struggling to be creative. Uh, all of you would have received a mailing that went out from Lori Hahn recently to the community explaining all the different kinds of subs that we need and asking people to step up. Jason has been getting a flyer out to graduate schools locally because we think graduate students often have Fridays off. And would they be willing to sub one or two days a week to, especially on Fridays where it's the hardest day? Not only do we have higher teaching, teacher absenteeism on Fridays, but we get a worse response from subs who want to take a day to work a Friday. So it is a confluence of events and we're raising it. I don't know if we're raising it enough and, and we're doing the best we can to fill, to fill the gaps.
I'm sorry, I'm like so anxious to ask this question. So like, back in the day, many moons ago, when I was in college, I would get home in May and I would substitute teach at my own high school. Um, it's a great gig. And it was, you know, for the level I was at in my education, it was a great little job to get me into the summer. But our requirements around substitutes require a bachelor's degree, correct?
Correct.
Is there any flexibility?
Wasn't there talk about changing that?
What about an education student, like someone who's studying education undergrad?
They have to have a bachelor's.
They have to have a bachelor's. And that's required by the state or just by, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's not a local requirement. But again, it's why we think grad students could be an interesting place to go.
Well, I'm just thinking students, like, but it's, it's unfortunate that like a third-year undergrad education major couldn't step in and help an elementary class for a day. No, yeah. Because they're probably the ones that'd be most eager for that opportunity.
That's where grandparents out there.
I know.
I just want to point out that the actual expenditures for substitutes for the 2223 school year was $443,253. So a budget request of $450,000 is going to cover our actuals from a year ago.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You're talking about actuals, yeah.
An actual spend for 2223.
So you're rightsizing the ship.
Yeah, we're just trying to get the number to reflect in the.
$443,253.
Okay.
I gave a much longer answer than Linda. It had a lot more color, it had a lot more color and nuance and narrative to it.
And it's like, bottom line.
It just sits there and lets it.
Bottom line.
So it's, it's again, it's like the safety monitor, I mean, the SROs, it's like, we're creating this opportunity, but filling that position is just as challenging.
Yeah, and, and right, and the budget conversation has to happen first because we need the ability to be able to go out after those positions. And then we have to get creative about being able to go and get those positions. But, you know, the first step is to have the resources available so that we can go after them. And quite honestly, with a little bit of contingency, so there's some room for creativity in going after filling those positions. It's why I'm so nervous about offering up a retirement savings next week because I think that would be self-defeating at this moment in time.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with that.
Can I, do you just do graduate students in education?
No, no, we went to law schools.
I was going to ask, there's a ton of those types of schools.
Anybody sitting on a current bachelor's degree who only has classes on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we want. Make yourself available and come and sub for us. And it's a, right, it's a, it's a quick 120 bucks. What is it?
We're not sure that law students are both like.
Wait, what is it?
We, we put up a flyer at Quinipiac Law. There's one there as well.
I'm going to say this, I'm judging a mock trial competition for the, for the law schools. I think in two weeks, I will, I know you guys are going to be there. I know Quinipiac's going to be there. Um, I will be hitting them up and giving out my card and saying, contact me.
I'll send you the flyer.
Yes, please do, because I'm going to be walking around and tell, talking about.
Principals are writing in their newsletters about substitutes and recess monitors and lunch aids. They're, they're reaching out. Again, it's worth noting, this budget shows no increase in administrative staffing. It shows no increase in instructional coaching. It shows a net increase of 5.7 administrative, uh, teaching positions. But as it stands right now, it shows an increase of 13 non-certified positions. And you've heard the principals talking about the importance of having the non-certified positions so that we insulate the teachers and the principals to do their work. It, it is frustrating to know that we have principals covering classes, particularly at the elementary level. They are not doing the work that we hired them for. They are the most expensive substitutes you're ever going to find. But, but when nobody else is there, they're stepping up and they're covering those classes for us.
I think the important thing to remember, Ms. Grader, about the, about the bachelor's degree piece. It's not so much the degree as it, as it is the age. And I think that.
I get that.
We need to be mindful of the differential between a high school senior and a undergrad.
I had a teacher chase me down the hall, true story. My nun, a nun teacher, my sister Ellen.
This is a while ago, by the way.
Chased me down the hall and she said, Ms. Meenhan, get back to class. I was a junior in college. So she, because I looked like a high schooler. So I get your point. I'm just trying to think outside, you know, I just.
Creative, yes.
Yeah, just maybe education majors, you know, have to be see, I don't know. It just seems like this is a problem that's not going to get solved right away. And when the parameters that we have, if we could change those parameters, it might help.
Retired community members watching this on, on YouTube need to sign up to be substitute teachers in our schools.
We are working with the, the, the area schools of education though, in, you know, with internships and so forth to help in that, in that realm. I think to Dr. Freeman's point, we're just up against a competitive pool of, of surrounding towns that every time one school district makes a move that is innovative, somebody else comes out with something equally as innovative. There's just a limited pool right now. But believe me, we're doing everything we can.
No, I know.
Any other topics of budget conversation that, that folks want to raise? I know we, um, will receive answers to a few more questions soon. That is not because people aren't feverishly trying to get to them. And again, I want to, um, Linda, thank you, and Dr. Freeman, thank you for the speed with which you're responding to a multitude of questions. Very much appreciated.
And, and would the board like me to come with some suggested considerations for reductions for the next meeting?
I think that would, that would be great because, you know.
I don't believe I need to do suggested additions. I think that we've got that covered.
Yeah, and I, and again, it's just very helpful for us because, you know, I'll speak for myself. I can look through and say, ooh, I wonder if we can cut there. I wonder, but, but, um, but you all have the knowledge behind, um, and we've asked lots and lots of questions so that we're, we're sharing that knowledge. But, um, but hearing that from you, if, if we're considering reductions is really very helpful.
And I'll, I'll, the dollar amounts associated with them.
Okay.
And I know that you just said this, but we also very much appreciate the written responses. So we'll continue, we'll finish the ones that we weren't able to respond to for tonight. And if any additional ones come in, we'll keep processing those through the week.
Okay, that's, that's terrific. All right.
We're all glad we did the census.
Yes, no, absolutely.
It's great.
It could have been 10:30.
That's right. Yeah, no, I think we covered, based on the questions that came in, et cetera, I think we covered the, the major topics. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for those of us, those of you who joined us tonight in person and on camera. Um, again, we will next meet as, as a board to discuss the budget next Monday, February 5th.
With a possible decision, but in past years, at times, we've had to push that as well.
That's right. Thank you so much. Good evening.